Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately sea captains' homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Cars and printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-73.
Meeting to order, and in open session state that the board will go into executive session under General Laws Chapter 30A Section 21A3 to discuss the resolution of all turbine litigation. And the reason for motion to go into executive session is that not going into executive session would impair our position with respect to negotiations and legal cases.
Second?
Thank you. By roll call.
Brown, aye.
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye.
Moran, aye.
Jones, aye.
Thank you. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We've just come back from open session. We're now gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No proclamations. Recognition, Ms. Braga.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to take a moment tonight to recognize and honor the passing of Senior Captain Greg Clements, who was with the Fire, Falmouth Fire Department. He was, he began here, he was a lifetime firefighter, who began as a volunteer firefighter in West Falmouth, and then came on full-time in 1986. And so he's been serving for all of that time. His brother serves as a firefighter here in town as well, and he passed away, Greg passed away unexpectedly while he was with some family and friends last night. So certainly a real loss to our community. He was, by all accounts, just an unbelievably reliable firefighter, someone who had made that his entire life's work, and got up each day to serve his community, and to certainly risk his life for people he didn't even know. He also, from what I hear, was just the kind of guy that you could call at 3:00 in the morning and tell him you had a dead battery and you were at Logan, and he would just get in his car and come and get you. So truly a loss to our community. Obviously we stand in support of his family and in support of our first responders. It's a close-knit community, and those individuals who worked and served with Greg will need our support as well. So just a moment of silence and recognition of all he's done.
Thank you. Any announcements from the board? We have announcement for plans for the Kerwin-Murray Memorial Bike Ride.
(Inaudible).
Sure.
I don't have enough for the staff.
We'll pass them up. Thanks, Matt. Welcome.
As soon as we do. Good evening, everybody. My name's Matt Patrick. I think you know who I am, and I'm here because I wanted to ask your permission to start a bike ride, an annual bike ride that will benefit people who are at risk of going homeless, and create, and help create affordable housing. We're trying to benefit Falmouth Housing Corporation. They are the sponsors of the ride. It's probably, if not the first ride, it's going to be the first annual ride in Falmouth. And it's about 30 miles, and it will, it will start at the Falmouth Beach, at the Surf Drive Beach House, and head easterly, generally along the marathon route, and with a few corrections. We will have police details at appropriate intersections. And we will have a shorter ride for parents with children. That will just head in the same direction to the Minot Bridge, and then turn around there and head back. They'll start about a half an hour later. As I said earlier, all proceeds will go to the Falmouth Housing Authority Corporation to fund neighborhood workforce housing and homelessness prevention. And I'm here to respond to any questions. There's much more detailed information here. So we're hoping to make this an annual event that will grow and become much larger in participation-wise.
That's great. We appreciate the preview. I understand you're gonna be going before the Special Events Committee pretty soon in terms of working out the details. And then how is this gonna best be published? Will there be a website to refer to, or?
Yes, we will have a website. It will be up probably sometime tomorrow. It's falmouthhousingcorp.com, dot org. It says dot com here. Dot org slash bike ride.
Great. Any other questions?
Just a comment. I don't think you could commemorate two more deserving people than Peter Kerwin and Bob Murray. They were terrific contributors to the people in this community.
Thanks, Sam.
I had the honor of serving with Peter Kerwin for many years on the school committee, and he's a true saint.
That's, that's the idea. Also to remember the works of those two gentlemen who've done so much for Falmouth. And it's, they'll serve as a reminder, hopefully, every time we do the event, to all of us that there's a lot we can do for our neighbors to give them a hand up. So that's the whole idea of this thing. But thank you for reminding me of that.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If you have any questions, we have the staff here from Falmouth Housing Corporation, Linda Clark, the president, as well.
Great. Thank you very much. Terrific event coming up. Next on our agenda is public comment. Is there anyone who, I'll just read if you wanna step up, and I'll just let everyone know, public comment is made on routine matters, not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes.
Good evening. Thank you. Carter Hunt from Lockaway Farms Drive. I have a petition for the Board of Selectmen regarding residency requirement and shellfishing, and specifically for the shellfish aquaculture plan. I know you're gonna be talking about that later on in the evening. If you'd like me to defer to that point in time to talk about this, it really is a petition to ask the board to do two things. One is to require residency for any aquaculture permit in the, in the town of Falmouth.
Thank you. We will wait. You can hand it up if you like.
Yep.
But since it is on the agenda. Mark?
Thank you.
Mark Fineran, Trotting Park Road. I'd like to speak on something that went on last week during the joint meeting between the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. We also had the engineers here telling us that we needed further work done on the causeway at Chapakoi, which is no surprise to anyone. It's kind of just an addition to the last work we did there before. And we spent about $1 million on that, I believe it was. And now we're looking for a million and a half dollars. The cause of both of these incidents of damage are just simple maintenance. In front of any fixed ocean structure, they pile rocks. It's referred to as armament. Most people would think that it's there to protect the concrete surface behind it, which it is, but that's just a small part of what it does. I mean, it'll absorb the energy from strong storms, and the rocks will move all around, and eventually they can be displaced, and they need to be replaced. But the number-one thing that the armament does is it breaks the surface tension of the water. So when the waves are slapping up against the structure, if you've ever gone down to watch, you can see that the water turns all foamy and bubbly. It doesn't allow the water to go under the structure and draw out all the fines, which then causes the structure to fall. In both instances, the armament was all gone. The concept would be, it's easy to explain. It's like, say I was sitting here drinking something out of a glass with a straw, and maybe it were to come up and poke my straw full of holes, obviously I wouldn't be able to draw any water through it, and the same thing happened here. Now, when they fixed it the last time, they never bothered to go over and replace the armament, and now we're into it for another million and a half dollars. I'd like to suggest to you, Doug, and your Coastal Resiliency Committee, that they can, should start checking some of these structures, because if we have to keep repairing these things because of lack of simple maintenance, you're never gonna get a dime out of this town. And I can tell you, another area where this is happening is on the Mare Vista Bridge. The same thing. It's simply a matter of the armament being missing, and I mean, this million and a half dollars we're spending, you know, 10 or 20 tons of stone at a couple of grand would have prevented this. And I think it hasn't been done lately, so I think it falls on you guys' lap.
Thank you.
And I think you should follow up on that.
Okay.
Thanks, Mark. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's Ron Swig. I live in Precinct One, and I'm your representative on the Cape Light Compact, and so it's getting, although it's summer, it's still hot, but the Cape Light Compact has energy efficiency programs that are basically done through support from us, through our electric bills. And I would encourage everyone to take advantage of that, to call them, to do an audit. They'll change light bulbs. They'll give you energy efficiency bulbs, LEDs or CFLs. And the number to call for that is 800-797-6699. This affects, this involves residences, businesses, and government facilities. Our new streetlight program that I think is saving about 50% off the electric bill for that has, came through the Cape Light Compact, as well as many of us in our homes have had insulation and other things done. The, also, the Housing Assistance Corporation assists for low-income houses and, or owners, as well as even rental properties can be supported. And they, the number for that, to call them, is 508-771-5400, and the Cape Light Compact provides support for that. Some things you may not know about the Cape Light Compact is the advocacy role it plays, and it's been working to try and restrict National Grid from taking over, where the incentives for energy efficiency are much lower, and they're trying to take, to basically take care of the energy efficiency program for all natural gas homes in the, on the Cape. And, and also working with certain elements that NSTAR is trying to do that are disincentives to renewable energy program development. So there are a lot of things that's going on, but the main thing is, is that I encourage you all to give them a call, and they'll come out and do an audit, check the house over, look at everything, change light bulbs, and then there can be additional testing done, analysis that can help out. So go for it.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Any other announcements? Okay, we'll move to the next item, which is licenses. A vote to approve the application for three one-day wine and malt liquor licenses, New Silver Beach Improvement Association. Is there anyone here for the applicant? Okay, is there a motion?
I'm, oh, sorry.
I move approval. A second.
I'm just, I'm sorry, if I just might note that I would, I know that there was just a concern with, that the police department had about any underage drinking, so just wanna, you know, emphasize, I know there's no one here for the applicant, but just to make sure that, I know we received response that they would have an adult monitor, but just for, so it's on the record that that's something that the board hopes that it's taken seriously.
And in fact, the motion could be subject to the license having the monitor attached to it. So would you be willing to amend your?
I would be happy to make that change.
And for the second?
Someone needs to step forward and put their name on the line. They're gonna be responsible, right?
There has to be a monitor, is what the police suggested.
The police was concerned about. And we did receive a response back from the applicant saying they would do that, but I just, again, you know, it's not often that the police department raises a concern about some of these events, so I just wanna make sure that we address that.
Are you willing to accept that change?
Absolutely.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, under administrative orders, I'm gonna read straight through the Eversource matters, and just stop if you wanna discuss any of them.
Actually, I'll ask a question beforehand.
Sure.
Because it's sort of relevant to all of them.
Yep.
We're still waiting on the Lakeview Ave completion. And it was, the response was, was that Eversource, or?
Next, Greg.
That was Eversource.
They were waiting for them to finish the work there.
Yeah, Selectmen, they had indicated that they completed their work, and they're awaiting Verizon and, I believe Comcast to move their wires.
So it's Verizon and Comcast that were having?
Correct.
So there's no reason to hold these. There's a little bit of a bargaining chip with Eversource.
Yes, they thankfully and mercifully completed their work after a significant delay.
It seemed like there was more items that were requesting approval than there were engineering sign-offs. There was only four sign-offs.
The sign-offs were?
There were a couple sign-offs that came in our email this afternoon.
Okay. Well, that was all of them, actually. But I thought there was only four. Two, two...
There were only four here. Only three here.
Okay.
There was three.
Three.
It was four this afternoon.
And they did come through engineering.
Okay, then.
So the requests are to approve Eversource petition to install one new four-inch conduit and one handhole on Lake Shore Drive for service to 241 Lake Shore Drive. B, approve Eversource petition to install one new four-inch conduit and one handhole on Worcester Court for service to 16 Worcester Court. C, approve Eversource petition to install one new four-inch conduit and one handhole on Dartmouth Ave for service to 207 Grand Ave. Do we have a motion?
What, is this a hearing?
This is, this is just not a hearing.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be here?
No. It's just administrative order.
I move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I have a question. I'm not sure if Mr. Jack is here. As to what is, the work that's being done on Surf Drive right now and Mill Road, it's doing conduits? Is there any?
Peter?
Is Peter here?
Peter, do you have any information on that?
This is for Surf Drive?
Yep.
That's the gas company.
Okay.
The gas company's installing a gas main up several hundred feet up Mill Road and also along Surf Drive, over, from Mill Road over the culvert to Fresh River. On Mill Road, we've got a good drainage system working there, so we required the gas company to, it's a trench repavement right now, but we're requiring them to mill the road where they're gonna pave from the edge of road out to the yellow line.
And the gas company chooses the timetable they want, as opposed to a timetable that might be better for the town, right?
Well, they go through, they go through the engineering division, and they were going back and forth with permits. One thing that we are watching out for right now to make sure is that there's no interference with the roadways, road race coming up in a couple of weeks, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a vote to accept donation from the T. Ticket Civic Association in the amount of $500 to the Veterans Department donation account. So move with thanks for that generosity.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Kerry's, thank you.
Very nice.
Next, we have a vote to accept a donation from Falmouth Road Race in the amount of $3,000 to the Marine and Environmental Services donation account to fund the purchase of eight EDs.
Move approval?
Go ahead.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have vote to accept a donation from the Kiwanis Club of Falmouth
in the amount of $550 to the Recreation Department donation account. Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Just a lot of thanks. This goes to allowing some individuals to attend the summer camp who otherwise would, some children who otherwise would not be able to, so.
Very generous, and thank you for that. Next?
I think we just need to vote, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, moving ahead here. Next, we have a vote to approve a memorandum of agreement between the National Marine Fisheries Service, Massachusetts Historical Commission, and the Town of Falmouth for the Coonamessett River lower dam removal and lower bog restoration. Mr. Suso?
Madam Chair, this is, you know, the next step in the direction of the lower bog restoration that we have been talking about and working with Betsy Gladfelter Conservation Commission and others on this very significant project. And this concurrence of the board would be necessary in order for us to take the next step. I so recommend.
And so the request is to have the town manager execute the memorandum of agreement affecting that? Is there a motion?
Question first.
Yes, Tim?
On page three, under the major section Interpretation, there's references to NOAA. Does NOAA have a party in this restoration or preservation?
Might be one of the grant sources, maybe?
Well, it says NOAA and the Town of Falmouth with assistance of 36 CFR 61 qualified architectural industrial.
What page are you reading?
Page three. Under the Roman numeral three interpretation, there's references to NOAA, first line and last line. And that's the first time I've seen them cited in here.
That probably should be National Marine Fisheries Service.
Well, that's what I was wondering.
So that might just be a typo, Mr. Suso? That's on Interpretation, 3A, page three.
I think National Marine Fisheries is part of NOAA, so maybe somebody just switched the nomenclature around. Okay, well.
So just with clarification of that, I would move approval if we can just clarify that piece of it?
Yeah.
Exactly. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
I like the fact that they're gonna do all that historic documentation of the old mill and key records, and I don't know, maybe there'll be a kiosk to clean all that?
Yes, I think there's gonna be kiosks with some natural, sort of the history of, you know, a nature component, and then a people component on the back.
They used to actually mill the wool for Union Civil War uniforms.
So the history, like, on the bike path?
Mm-hmm.
Very cool. All right. Next, we have vote to send a letter of support to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the Bourne Rail Trail Shining Sea Bike Way Extension. This is something prepared by Representative Viera to really get this, kind of, this project more visibility. I've met with the chairs of the four involved towns, including Mashpee, Bourne, and Sandwich, along with the Bike Ways Committee, Bike Ways folks from all those towns, and Representative Viera. I think everyone's had a good opportunity to take a look at this. Additionally, I can tell you that I spoke with Tom Caher from the RTC. He's very much in favor of it already, and sent an email with that expression of his support. And with that, unless there are any other questions, I'll take a motion. So move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have a potential approval of a lip home equity loan request in the amount of $12,000 for Lauren Petty-Cuddy with respect to 15 Esker Place in conformance with the deed rider for this affordable unit. If you would.
Sure.
Key us up.
So this is a fairly standard sort of item. It's a deed-restricted affordable unit, and in the deed restriction and the deed rider, it requires a town approval for any additional loans to ensure that the, that the total loan outstanding is, has appropriate ratio to the value, the resale value of the home within that deed restriction. And all of the parameters are well within the limits in this case, so we can recommend approval.
Any more, any questions?
You have a motion, or any? Doug?
Doug, a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a request to authorize the application for a CPC grant to pursue Gov. Fuller Field renovations. Is there someone to speak to that?
Yes, Mark's here.
Terrific.
Commodores President.
Welcome, Mark.
Good evening. Mark Haspers, President, Falmouth Commodores. With the permission to pursue a CPC grant through the Selectmen to make further improvements on the Gov. Fuller Field area. This will include installing safety netting, which there is none now, to reconstruct the dugouts, install a handicap vertical lift and walkways to the press box, Burke's backstop, new visitor bleachers, and chain link fence. So we have been in contact with Joel Alenick, with the Acting Director of the Rec. Department, and he fully supports this and would be the lead on the application for us. We've also received support from Kathy Burke, the Athletic Director, Rocky Gomes, Parks and Recreation, and Tom Kelleher, the Falmouth High School varsity baseball coach.
Sounds like you've done your homework.
Tried to.
Is there any question from the board?
It'd just be nice to see that elevator be put in there for handicap access, and you've already constructed the, the press box facility to include it, and this would be fun, or at least money toward funding that whole effort, so.
Right, and would also allow us to offer scholarships for handicap broadcast interns.
Yeah. That's great. I would just say that I think it's wonderful that the Commodores are working with the Rec. Department and just really pushing forward, something I think that has been kind of a long time coming, and it's nice to see that collaboration and getting this, you know, moving to the next phase. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Great. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
We now have a hearing. It's a continuation of an application for a transfer of a shellfish aquaculture license from Atlantic Oysters LLC to Cape Cod Oyster Company, Inc., and it is continued from July 10, 2017. Is the applicant here? Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Stuart Rapp, receiver for Atlantic Oysters LLC.
Thank you very much. Is there any new information you'd like to provide since we had the initial hearing?
I sent a, an email earlier today to Mr. Suso, and I just wanted to confirm that he received that, and I asked that the information that I had sent to him earlier be then transmitted to the board. I'm not sure if it got to Mr. Suso.
Anything that came in today. I was in an arbitration hearing almost all day, so I haven't caught up with my emails.
Do you wanna give us a Reader's Digest version?
If I may, I have one copy, if I may, Madam Chair.
You can submit that for the record, absolutely. Thank you very much. And if you could just tell us the subject?
I received an email earlier today, and it was from, or it was, the content of that email was relative to a letter that was sent to numerous people by Mr. Levitt. I was not on the list of individuals receiving that email, but I did receive it from another source. source. I then responded to the town relative to paragraph five of that letter that referred to me, so I wanted to clear up the record relative to that. I also just want to make the board aware of a letter that I was privy to that was sent to the board by Remi Streszenger. Todd Streszenger was the manager of Atlantic Oysters LLC, he's now deceased. His widow, or actually ex-wife, sent an email to the town. She refers in that email that I am the recipient, or the intended recipient of this aquaculture license, and that is not correct. I've asked this board for permission to transfer the license. I'm not going to be the recipient of it. I've asked to transfer it to Cape Cod Oyster, so just wanted to clear the air relative to that.
Good point of clarification. Thank you.
So I'm here to answer questions you'd like?
Are there any questions from the board?
Is there anyone at Atlantic Oyster that, sorry, Cape Cod Oyster, that is a resident of Falmouth?
I'm not aware of the makeup of Cape Cod Oyster. I'm simply asking permission to transfer under the statute the license that was granted by this town to Atlantic Oysters LLC. So I'm not here on behalf of.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the other parties who'd be able to answer that question? Thank you, welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Alex Shortalakis, I represent Cape Cod Oyster. No, no members of Al Serprenaut, who was here at the last hearing, and Dave Ryan is the manager who's here tonight, neither of them are residents of the town of Falmouth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so when I was looking at the requirements, it said a transfer should be treated as a new license regarding a hearing, and all the parameters of the operation should be reviewed as if it were a new license, just to make sure that the new manager will be operating in a consistent fashion with the original intent.
Mm-hmm.
So has that been undertaken, or?
Well, in the, in the initial hearing, we did go through the operations, the history.
But we didn't see any kind of maps or layout of, you know, what was the real operational plan and what.
You can, go ahead and address that to the applicant. Good point.
Do you have any more information about how the, the fact that it was, it's just sort of being transferred, but we're not really seeing a presentation of what the operation would be, other than it's just going to be sort of business as usual. But when I was reviewing the requirements, it said it should be treated as if it were a new application, so that it's, you know, we know that it's going by the rules.
So through you, Madam Chair?
Certainly.
Again, I don't represent Cape Cod Oyster. I'm just here seeking permission to transfer to Cape Cod Oyster. I think that might be better asked of the applicant.
Who's right behind you, sure.
Alex Shortalakis again.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan is here, can answer questions about the capability under, what we're doing is an assignment of an existing grant, so all the meets and bounds are there about what the grant is going to be specific to. So I think unlike, if it was a new application where you were picking out an area which you wanted to start a new grant, that will be more applicable here. We've clearly filed an application showing the transfer of the existing grant, all the meets and bounds are there. Mr. Ryan is here, we have letters that we received that they are more than qualified to operate. They're already in existence in Barnstable. They have some.
I saw the letters and so forth.
So they have some 30 acres in Barnstable, have eight employees, this is what they do for a living. And so I think they meet the requirements under your, under the town's code with respect to the transfer. If they were to apply for a new license, I think they would meet those transfers as well. I think when we're looking at that application process, I think it's saying if you wanted a new grant, you need to specifically delineate where that grant is going to be. But here, again, we're doing an assignment, and if you look at the prior assignment that was done, I think in 2011 from Denise Kelly, whose family held this, and I was wrong, I think it's the largest, the longest standing grant in the Commonwealth for over 100 years. I think if you look at the grant that was done then, it was pretty specific that the applicant met the statutory requirements with respect to being capable of operating it, and then it was an assignment, again, of that existing grant of the area. Mr. Ryan is here, if you have specific questions about how they're operated and how they're qualified.
I would just, more question about the process and whether there was any type of a review.
Mr. Duffy, I wonder if you could step in and just give us a Reader's Digest version of your information with respect to Mr. Brown's specific request in terms of conditions on the transfer of a license.
Madam Chair, this is Frank Duffy, Town Counsel. You had asked me to send a memorandum on this transfer, which I did, I sent it out last week. On the specific issue of the transfer, I have a little slightly different interpretation of the criteria for transfer than Mr. Brown just cited. It's not really a de novo review of it from the beginning. Aquaculture licenses granted pursuant to General Act Chapter 13058, transfer all rights and privileges enjoyed by the licensee, and they shall be assumed by the transferee. So whatever the transferrer are, that is language for Atlantic, has Cape Cod Oyster will get. Any changes to the terms and conditions of the license upon transfer should be based upon new information in advance of public purpose. The board may approve a transfer, and this is the language in the statute, to any person to whom it might have originally been granted. So if the transferee, Cape Cod Oyster, is deemed by you qualified to operate the license, that is what you should be focusing on, because the license is in existence and already has been granted. And by my calculation, this license was last acted upon by you in the year 2011, and it was transferred to Atlantic and renewed for an additional 15-year term. So it looks to me like the license, Atlantic is currently the licensee of record, and it goes to 2026. Now, while the licensee of record is Atlantic, Mr. Rapp, who's the receiver appointed by the Superior Court, stands in their shoes. They're out of the picture now. He has all of their rights, and he's been authorized by the court to stand in for them.
And with respect to the public purpose element of that, I know there was some concern, and certainly, I think it's within the board's purview, if it were to grant the request, to make it subject to addressing certain concerns that came up, for example, that the shellfish floats be located outside of the navigation channel, and that there'd be an operational plan deemed accessible, acceptable rather, to the shellfish constable?
Yes, I am aware of that. The terms of navigation, I think if there's a concern of navigation that has arisen since 2011, and it's something you feel should be addressed, I think you can ask that the transferee address that concern. The other one is the issue which I think was the one raised by Mr. Martenson, who's our deputy director of Marine and Environmental Services, and also the shellfish constable, was concerned about the operational problems that would occur if the transferee had to use the nearby boat ramp for accessing his, his grant, and whether or not that would cause a lot of queuing, for example, on, on weekends or during summer, summer peak time. And if that's an issue you want to have addressed, you should ask them to address it.
Mr. Martenson, could you, would you mind coming forward and just giving us a couple of those specifics?
Can I just, as he's coming up?
Sure.
I just want to, because looking back, I know this been, we're having this conversation about sort of how the process works, and the last transfer, I think it just helps to clarify that the language was that the board at that time found that Atlantic Oysters was sufficiently qualified in terms of knowledge and experience to operate. So really, that's the, that's the standard that we're using, whether or not this, this new transfer would, if they would be qualified in those terms. So not an entirely new review, but if they meet that, that standard.
Right. Mr. Martenson?
Hi, Chuck Martenson, Shellfish Constable. My concern, I guess, could be condensed at this point to, you know, prior, prior to this exchange, the grant was operated out of a shoreside facility that is contained with inside the grant area. This, as I, and I might stand corrected, but I would like some clarification, I guess, on this. It's my belief that the shoreside facility would not be part of the, the agreement between the receiver and the new applicant. And I guess in light of that, if that is to be true, if we could also find out just what the plans would be to run the, run the operation, whether it out of boat ramps, what time of year, obviously, there's different concerns. You know, this, this grant does go back a number of years, and when it was first, you know, issued, we did not nearly have the boat traffic that we have now, there are boat ramps, and parking issues and everything else, so.
Okay, so could we respond to Mr. Martenson, Mr. Shortalakis, or your client? Could you specifically address that?
Sure. We have, and I understand Denise Kelly is here, I believe she's here. I have spoken with her counsel, and we have a little bit of a chicken and a egg about the idea that we would like to lease that, or hopefully reach some agreement to lease that space if she'd be so willing to lease it to us, once we find out that we're going to be approved for a grant. You know, Dave Ryan is here, understands the concerns about access, you know, about use of the town landing, not interfering with other residents of the town's ability to use it. I think Dave can test, would be able to speak, saying he has no problem making sure that they're not a problem, and they don't need, what would your access need to be right now?
Perhaps the applicant could just speak to those issues, if that's all right, Mr. Shortalakis?
I'm going to introduce Dave Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
My name's David Ryan. I am a resident of Barnstable, I live in Catoot, but just for the record, I'm married to a Falmouth Clipper. Been happily married for 33 years, and my wife Cheryl is a longtime employee down at Cape Cod Healthcare in Falmouth, in the laboratory at Falmouth Hospital. Initially, our, we do hope to gain access to the waterfront from the same property that has been used in the past, but in the meantime, we, in Barnstable and Catoot Osterville area, we do work in some really high boat traffic areas, and we've, we've learned to manage some strategies where we do most of our work in the winter months, so we're not on the water during really the peak of, of boat traffic season. So we could establish nurseries, maintain nurseries from the boat ramps at, you know, off-peak hours, and then really do the majority of our harvesting in the winter months, which is a time of year that, that we enjoy working, that it's a big part of our business plan, is to spend most of our time in the water during, during those months.
Mr. Martenson, does that address all of your concerns?
Ms. White, yes.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Just, this is, I did read Mr. Duffy's legal memorandum, and I know that it's legal to transfer it, but what I was concerned with is that the parameters of operation, and there should be some sort of a formal review by Mr. Martenson and his staff to ensure that it's going to work, because we're not going to just hand it off and say, you know, "Good luck," but it's not really the same right now.
I think that we, if the, if it were the board's desire to approve the transfer, we can have some of those conditions put on the approval, which, if we get to, I think that's a good point. Sam?
Yeah, next to here, I guess through you to Chuck Martenson, has there been a history of blocking the navigation channel by the previous grant holder?
So just to clarify for everyone here, there's kind of two separate issues. There's the navigational piece, and then there's the, the shoreside component.
I understand.
Yep. As far as, so the, the grant was listed as roughly 22 plus or minus acres, when in reality, it's not really 22 acres, because there's a navigational channel that runs right through the middle of it. So in reality, it's really, you know, safer, you know, for guessing sake, I guess it'd be maybe 14 or 15 acres. It has, there obviously has been some rubbing of elbows, I would say, but there has not been any accidents that I'm aware of. I don't know if Director Fraser could add to that at all, but there's been no accidents or no kind of confrontation that's come of that.
I guess my questions really are, should we be putting some kind of conditions on this transfer, such that we do maintain navigable water through that grant?
Good evening, Greg Fraser, Harbor Master. I've asked that you add that if you do choose to transfer the grant, only because there have been issues in the past where primarily it's the aquaculture markers that have encroached on the channel. The issue you need to be aware of is that we mark that channel for best water, it's not always in the same location. We don't dredge it because of the shellfish in that area, so we have to be, have the flexibility of move the channel markers to accommodate boating traffic, and in order to do that, we need flexibility in the permit or the grant, so that we can ask whoever is operating that to move their markers outside the channel.
And if the applicant would speak, would that be agreeable?
Yes, I think all those, any of those modifications, including about the, making sure that we're using it and not interfering with other people's enjoyment of the waterfront, is fine. Again, we hope to get our own kind of landing area, so that's fine. The, the markers, Dave Ryan's been aware of, they've previously discussed that, I believe, and has no problem, obviously, doing that. So again, as I said at the first hearing, we want to be a good citizen of the town. We think this is a real opportunity for my client and the town. We hope to hire in the town, because they're going to need additional people to work on, for this grant, and we hope to find a location in the town.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Doug?
Maybe these are from Mr. Duffy again.
Mr. Duffy, I'm sorry, another question?
We're told we can only transfer this grant but not modify it, and then we're told we can put conditions on it to modify it, when they're applying for actually a very different grant than was given initially in 1879, or even 15 years ago, that the grant they're applying for is one that involves not using the land to get there, it involves using the boat ramp. That makes it, in my mind, a very different grant, and I agree with Mr. Brown, I would therefore want to see a new application delineating where they're going to be harvesting, how they're going to be doing it, what boats they're using, because it is now a different application in my mind, if they're using the boat ramp as opposed to shoreline. I cannot see us approving this without that actually worked out and say, "Oh, they'll work it out later." I think that's sufficient enough. The question I have for you, you talked about, we can approve it as if it was the original applicant. Original for what year?
The language, Mr. Jones, is you may approve the transfer to any person who it might have been originally granted.
Which time? It's been transferred twice now.
Well, I think you look back at the last one, the history of the license may go back a long time. In fact, I'm pretty sure it goes back many, many years, probably to the 1930s or more.
So I guess that's what I'm saying originally.
But the last action of this board was in the year 2011. That was transferred to Atlantic, and in the year 1996, it was extended for an additional 15 years after it had been transferred to Denise Kelly in 1986.
And so a transfer or extension is considered a granting, not?
No, it's an extension of the original, of the grant.
So does that mean we have to go back to the original grant to apply this language, as opposed to a transfer or a renewal? When it says it can be any person to whom it might have originally been granted?
Well, that is the qualification of the person. It's not the meets and bounds or description of the grant itself, it's the qualification of the person to run it, that's the way I read it.
Right, but if you want to be ridiculous, you could say, "Well, they wouldn't have been alive," so we couldn't.
Well, no, no, we're not saying that, but if, if, if the person that is the transferee of this is qualified to, to receive an original grant, that is what you're looking at on transfer.
To this original grant, or to any original grant? To this original grant?
Any original.
Or any one, really, because they're kind of all the same, but.
All right, I understand, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Madam Chair.
Sam?
It seems to me that we can't make all these decisions, and so I'm, I'm really feeling like it's really up to our Harbor Master to really manage this, to make sure that the channels are navigable and unobstructed, but also to make sure that the, if they're going to use the public boat ramps, that those are not being occupied. And so I want to defer that management to staff, and just simply say that's a condition everyone placed on the transfer of this grant.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that as a motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Are there any other conditions that you want to oppose?
I mean, this is a hearing, are we closing the hearing?
True. We do have to close the hearing first.
Well, we already took comments, but we do need to. Well, we already took comments, but we do need to close the hearing.
We do.
Is there a motion to close the hearing?
No more comments?
You want to invite any other comments or?
We took them last, uh, we'll take a comment, come right up, if that's the board's wish.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Is this in favor or opposed to?
Opposed to transfer the license.
Thank you.
Name's Ronald Smolowitz, I'm, I hold a license in the town of Falmouth. I'm concerned at multiple levels about this transfer of license. We've had a lot of discussions over the past five or six years about how we should be managing shellfish in town, and how we should be managing aquaculture. We always talk about developing a plan, we have a plan in motion, and this may open up and set some precedents that we really don't wanna go down, and just one that I'm concerned about, when I applied for my shellfish aquaculture license, the town of Falmouth form asked me if I was a resident of Falmouth, and then the question beyond that says, "Please attach documentation to prove your residency in Falmouth." Now, I don't know if that's a regulation or a policy, I assumed that-
That did come up last time, it is, it's a nice-to-have, not a need-to-have, in the sense of the legality. We've since clarified with town council that it is not a, a requirement.
That's correct, it's not a regulation, but it was a policy that every aquaculture license in this town had gone through. When Todd arrived in this town to get and make that transfer from the Kelly's, he knew he had to establish residency. The danger of doing away with that is, you could open up all our waters to commercial fishermen from the rest of Massachusetts, because it's gonna be open doors on who has access to shellfish in this town. So once you start doing away with a policy, I think you're, you're gonna be opening up a can of worms. And then the second comment is, is, "Has the town done due diligence and consulting with the other communities that this company is working in?"
Uh, we have had recommendations in the, I'm sorry I didn't attend the prior hearing, but there were recommendations, yes, that was part of the, we asked for comments both in favor and against, and there was substantial testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duffy, if you're, is Frank still, thank you. If you could, if you could just kind of focus for a minute on the residency issue, because certainly this board, you know, would think it's a plus to have a, a resident be an applicant. I understand that we were, you know, advised that it wasn't a requirement, and, you know, certainly, I think this board may wanna change that and make it a more formal requirement, but could you speak to that issue generally?
That issue came up with the original application that Mr. Rapp submitted, which was a couple of months ago. He was initially informed by the town manager's office that a residency, there was a residency requirement. He suggested there wasn't, so the town manager asked me to look into it, and I did, and I determined that shellfish, aquaculture licenses are granted under Chapter 130, Section 57, it's a state law which governs their grant. There is no residency requirement in the law for an aquaculture license. There is, however, a residency requirement for a commercial shellfish license, that is, to license the people who go out and harvest the wild or the natural shellfish. There is a residency requirement for that. I was told, and I think this is probably just an anecdotal story, but the applications were printed very similarly, and one was carried forward from one to the other, because the, the commercial shellfish license existed first, but there is none, and I think that it's, if there is to be a residency requirement for an aquaculture license under a general law, then the town would have to petition the legislature for special act to allow them to do it. I don't think that, at least on the basis of the research I've run so far, that, that applies. Most, most licenses that are granted, most, not all, but most licenses that are granted under state law are available to anybody in the state, unless there's some specific provision for a residency requirement.
And so there is that provision for commercial license?
Yes, but that's the digging of the clamps.
Right, but you're just saying that, is that?
It's there, yeah.
The, so there is that provision, you just said is very rare, it does exist for commercial licensing?
No, it does exist for commercial licenses, in order to get a commercial digging license, you have to be a resident, but it's a different license under a different statute.
I understand, okay.
Mr. Smolowitz, did you wanna make a follow-up?
Yeah, just a question, so for me to operate my shellfish grant, I have to have a commercial shellfish license, is there a residency requirement to get my commercial shellfish license? Is the residency a town residency? I mean, that's what I need to operate my shellfish grant, a commercial shellfish license. All growers are commercial shellfishmen.
There's, there's actually two requirements, there's a transaction card-
Yeah.
-which keeps track, and that's through the state, keeps track of what you're selling. There's actually three, there's a local town license, which most, or evidently, all towns on Cape Cod have a residential requirement for a commercial license, which is issued through the town, and then there's a third piece to this, which is, there is a state license which is issued in addition to that. You need to have your state license and your transaction card in order before you can apply for the town license.
Thank you.
And so I think the question is, do you need a commercial license to run an agricultural?
Grant.
Grant.
No, I do not believe I do.
Yes.
No, you don't.
We will not take comments from the audience unless you're called upon, please refrain. Mr. Duffy, do you have a comment?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Carter Hunt from Rockaway, not to disagree with Mr. Duffy, but there is a residential requirement for an aquaculture grant in 12, 11 of the towns on Cape Cod. Number one, there are four towns, two towns that have no, three towns that have no aquaculture grants at all, so that's the majority of towns requiring it.
Mr. Zweig.
Thank you, Ron Zweig again, please, one, I'm speaking in opposition to the, to the grant, the transfer, basically, and, and the way I look at it, I'm not, there are a lot of issues that've come up, and, and one was competency, and people thought, okay, basically, it's a big company, they probably know what they're doing, but as Falmouth is being, is faced with potentially hundreds of millions of dollars of wastewater infrastructure development, and that shellfish aquaculture is one of the options to try and, and reduce that, as well as create jobs and benefits to the community, and to be done in a way that, the way the aquaculture plan is going is likely with smaller, with small grants, relatively small grants through the rotational plan, et cetera, and other things. So what I, what I'm wondering is, that as this plan comes, if you've looked at the aquaculture plan, which you probably have, a major focus is on water quality management, that's a big, right up front and part of it, and whether this grant would then be operated in a way that would be specifically targeted to address that problem, I have no clue, basically. It's a big area, it's 20 acres, Wacoit Bay and, and its adjoining waters are seriously impacted by nitrogen loading and water quality problems. Any farming would help, but if the structure and the design of specific management practices is done and specified by the town to optimize water quality improvement, then I think that that's an important issue that, that is coming, and this grant is not a two-year grant, it's what, 10, 10 years are left, or more, and it could be, and it could be extended again after that. So the thing is, is that whether this is really a time to do it until we know how it's gonna be managed, and to the benefit, to the public good in many ways as well, which is really what we're trying to do. So I think that that is a critical element you may wanna consider in your, in your discussion and deliberation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just wait till you get, the folks at home can't hear you.
Oh, I'm, oh, Ms. Howlenbeck from Wacoit Landing Road, neighbor, who's been around all my life, and I don't see the future of this operating the way it did and has. It really will take on a whole new venue, and I'm, I'm just concerned, I'm sorry I missed the first meeting, I didn't hear a lot about this, it was kind of hush-hush.
What are, what are your specific concerns?
Where they will be working from, as has been mentioned, working from the landing, or where? Do they come in on boats from out in the sound?
You can, you can ask your questions, a couple of them, and then we'll have the applicant respond, how's that?
Okay.
So that's one.
Do you have any sort of business plan? Are you going to just raise oysters, or will there be cohogs as, as well as part of what I guess those are my questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. O'Leakis?
Yes, on the last one, I think the easiest one, just oysters is the plan, and on the access, I, I think we've covered it, we're gonna do, we'll be very happy to get a lease, if we can reach economic terms with the, Ms. Kelly formally had the grant, if we can't, in the interim, we'll, we can get access through other means, we won't interfere with the use by the town, we're happy to make adjustments and assure tonight, if you want, as a modification to the grant, that we will limit our use and how we're gonna limit our use. As someone else pointed out, I, I know this grant was originally for 15 years, it expires in two, by, when I looked at it, sometime in 2026. We're hopeful that this is gonna be a successful venture, if it's a successful venture, we'd obviously like to be back here again, asking for a renewal, I probably won't be here, for a lot of reasons, but hopefully we'll be back with a renewal, so we'd like to show at that time that we're, again, we're a good citizen of the town and we're working. You know, my client has talked about branding these oysters, as it does with its other oysters, specifically to the region, so if you go, they have Weyano oysters associated where the Weyano area and the town of Barnstable, so we've already talked around ideas about branding these oysters specific to that area, and, you know, that can do wonderful things, as we've seen on the Cape, you know, Wellfleet has done a wonderful job branding itself for oysters, Ducksbury has done a wonderful job, it brings tourism, does all the good things that we want in addition to these little creatures cleaning the water for us, so I-
Could you just address, and I know we did hear more about it at the first meeting, but just a, very brief to address her last question about a business plan, maybe if you could just speak to the fact, it's a, the company's been-
This is, this has been in existence for over 30 years, it does have over 30 acres in the town of Barnstable, it sells its oysters nationally to, to large restaurant groups, I don't think it sells to anything, anyone on the Cape right now, its particular brand, oysters.
Some wholesalers and-
So, some wholesalers, so it's an established company, again, we have ideas to, to brand these specifically for this region, you know, and Mr. Serprenon, who can't be here tonight, he has oyster beds at his own home, he operates, is a part of this operation at his own home, so he's a good steward, he understands what, what it's like to live above the store, if you will, and so he does care about it and cares about what it does. He is on the Town of Barnstable Shellfish Committee, I know, I think it's a committee, he's on the Town of Barnstable Shellfish Committee, so he's active in this community, he's active nationally, there is a plan, they're gonna grow this business, their existing business, again, they have eight employees, they will make sure that they do not interfere with other people's use and enjoyment of the water, they don't wanna do that, if it's busy there and interferes with their ability to get to the water.
Certainly. Doug?
Sounds like you've expressed some willingness to have a modification of this grant, would one of those modifications be to reduce it to a five-year grant?
I, I can't agree to do that right now, I mean, we have nine years left on the grant, not without, you know, I, I'm not committed, I haven't had a chance to talk to my client about that, Mr. Serprenon's here, I, I don't think I would really be willing to agree to that right now.
Because it is one of the concerns I have, is that for such a long term, when we really don't have the experience with this company in our town.
If I could just, Megan?
No, I, I accept that, so I share that concern, I also share the general concern that I think a 15-year grant is really long, it's not what we're really doing now, this is old, it's a little bit unique because of the history of this grant, so I think those are, are real and legitimate concerns. What I would say is that I, I think that we, we're looking at our staff here in town, who will then apprise us of whether or not these folks are doing what they're supposed to, and if they're not, I'm, I'm sure, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Frank or someone from MES, that there are some remedies, if these folks are not good stewards and they're violating the terms of their grant, or there are consistently problems, if what we're hearing tonight isn't being complied with, if they are harvesting from boat ramps and interfering with the public's enjoyment, if they are encroaching upon that, bless you, that navigation channel, those are all things that will be, you know, brought back before this board or through the proper channels, and I don't know if, if a final remedy is that a, a grant can be revoked, or what penalties, but I know that there, I mean, that's why we asked if there had been real issues with the, the previous grant holder, and we talked about that at the last hearing, and we heard that there hadn't been any kind of disciplinary actions against that grant holder, so I think it, it's important for us to recognize as a policy, you know, the issue about residency going forward, and, and maybe, again, we talk about, as Frank is indicating, that that becomes something that is, is part of our policy really more permanently, to the extent that we can, and then, you know, the piece that I think a 15-year grant is a really long time in this, in this setting, but, you know, I feel comfortable if we are putting some conditions on a renewal of this grant, with all of that being said, you know, that we put some requirements on them, and then if they're not living up to them, then we, you know, we go from there.
Before we close the hearing, does anyone have a question of any of the folks that have spoken here, anyone from the board?
I have more discussion, but no questions.
Okay.
Okay, one last, sir, two minutes.
My name is Manny Batello, and I live on Nev's Way. My question is, how does it affect the access to my Maori? I see on a chart that where I live, that whole area is highlighted for these shellfish beds or whatever, cages.
I think you're referring to the rotational aquaculture plan, and this is actually a discussion of a specific grant that's already in existence.
Okay.
Yours is, what you're concerned about is, it's coming up, yeah, sorry, you're stuck here.
Thank you, a few more minutes, that's a good preview. Would someone like to make a motion to, yeah, on this particular licensor? All right, this will be the last comment, no more than two minutes.
Good evening, I'm Dale Levitt, live in East Falmouth. I have two issues that I'd like to point out, I actually sent you an email yesterday concerning it, but I just want to emphasize, first, that the initial application was invalid, based on Chapter 30, 130 of state law, they have to include an operational plan, a detailed operational plan, and they have to define the meets and bounds of the site, and they failed on both counts. The operational plan was inadequate, and if you look at the modification of the boundaries, as was indicated by Cape Cod Oyster Company on the 5th of July, in response to a query from the Selectman's Office, they have misrepresented the boundaries, so that they are now proposing to put shellfish aquaculture gear in areas that are not within the bounds of the, of the aquaculture site. My second point has to do also with Chapter 130, in that one, Chapter 130 states that whenever a license transfer occurs, the previous laws, or regulations associated with that license transfer are in effect, and based on discussions with Denise Kelly, the license transfer of 1986 did have a residency requirement, and so that should carry forth with any kind of future transfer of that license, so.
Do you have any documentation of that, sir?
Of the-
That it was a license condition to that specific license?
You'd have to, you'd have to ask Denise.
Is she here?
She is here.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kelly, do you mind coming to the podium?
You have to come in.
So the folks at home can hear you. So the folks at home can hear you.
The 1986 grant required me to be a resident. If you really need proof, go back in court records of the case that resulted as. That is the only case law from that case that exists on aquaculture.
Thank you very much.
And it's part of the court law. Point of information, the eviction hearing is the third.
Thank you. Mr. Duffy? Mr. Duffy, would you mind commenting on the sufficiency of the application?
I'm not sure that I completely understood Mr. Levitt's question, but if he was talking about sufficiency of an application that this board acted upon by granting a license, then I think the issue of the sufficiency of the application before the grant of the license is probably a moot question at this point. This is not the place to revisit something that happened a long time ago. Just to follow up on one other point that was raised here, I think Ms. Megan mentioned it. The Board of Selectmen does have the right to revoke a license for failure to comply with any terms, conditions, or regulations or for substantial use of the licensed area. However, it does require a specific hearing on revocation with notice and a few other procedural matters which are not before you tonight.
Right. Thank you.
Does the denial of transfer count as a revocation?
You know, it could, under certain circumstances, depending on your reasons.
Okay, is there a motion to close the hearing?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Brown, aye.
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye.
Moran, aye.
John, aye.
Discussion must the board. Sam?
Yeah, one of the things I want to mention is that I think shortening the grant period is not necessarily a good idea. There's a lot of investment that's required in any kind of agricultural, agricultural kind of effort. If you make it too short, then the people aren't going to invest in the equipment to actually do justice to it. So I'm not really in support of that. I think you have to be careful. They're running a business and it needs to pay for itself. If you're going to invest in overhead equipment and that sort of thing, you've got to be able to pay it off over a reasonable period of time. So I think we're nickel and diming this thing and I don't think it's a good idea.
Can I just respond to that?
If the trust, if Stuart Rapp, who is the trustee in this judicial situation, is comfortable with, we've heard testimony as to the quality of Cape Cod Oyster Company from Sia Karples, who knows her stuff, they're inside and out as a highly reputable and objective observer. I think we feel pretty comfortable about their ability to run the business. That's it.
Mr. Jones?
In response to the concern about the short term, this is a company that already has the equipment, partly because they're taking over Atlantic Oysters equipment and they have their own. That's the only reason why I would consider, otherwise, I think your point is extremely valid, if they're starting up business and to ask them to put their money out for equipment. But they already do have some equipment. That's the only reason I consider that. Well, I know we don't have a regulation requirement for this license. I think we do have a policy that's very clear about commercial license. We have the same policy about residential taking of shellfish. And I do not feel comfortable granting this to someone who's not a resident.
Doug?
And I think that we were all under the understanding that the residency was required. And now it turns out that it's not a legal statistic. But I think we should investigate the 1986 thing that Ms. Kelly referenced. And I think that we're probably going to revisit the issue, I would hope, and put a residence requirement in place. So I hope that the applicant, if he is ultimately successful, would realize that it will likely not be renewed unless there's a residency attached to it. So it's my feeling. I don't think we're ready to make this until we really investigate the 1986 license and find out if it was actually required. And if it's been required of everyone else, I think that's a precedent there, that we should find out if there's legal standing on that.
It's also what Mr. Duffy said, is it can only be granted to someone who could have received the original grant.
Right.
And if 86, the original grant, had a residency requirement, we are obligated to stick to that requirement.
And another point, if I could, is unless the land is available and that's part of the application coming to us, I don't think we should grant it in hopes that they'll secure the land and then try to come up with a plan of action later. I think we need to have all that in the forefront before we make the decision.
Ms. Braga?
Well, I think, again, these are all really valid points and there's some messiness to the history of this particular grant. But those are some policy matters that we need to make going forward that are clear for people. I am always really uncomfortable with talking about policy that we are going to implement that we're trying to kind of retroactively apply to some things. You know, further, it's going to be really hard for the business to get land access with anyone when they don't even own the business yet. I mean, these are just, you know, how are you going to come up with an agreement to kind of, you know, I don't know, lease a piece of property from someone to harvest your shellfish if you don't even own the company yet? So if, I'm comfortable if those conditions are part of the transfer, again, if it's very clear that they can't take it from there, all of those things that we've talked about, they need to, you know, maintain the channel, all of those items, that if they're not doing it, there's going to be a repercussion. So, I mean, I agree. I think this is a, it's not ideally how the process would work. But I think we have a situation where, you know, we're just, we have a qualified, in my opinion, from what we've heard, someone who would be, an organization that would be qualified to take this grant because they, you know, they run a business, they have experience, they have knowledge, that's specifically what's cited in the last transfer. And so, I mean, I hear these concerns, but I guess I think we're putting the cart before the horse in some ways. If these folks have to do it and they don't do it, then there'll be repercussions. And if going forward, we want to be clear about these policies, which we have a working group that's really talking about this, you know, I think that's the place to apply some of these, you know, to just have a clearer policy going forward.
And I think the best way to look at those points is this would be a different hearing if we had those policies in place. Would have been a lot shorter hearing. And so I think the point about the cart before the horse is well taken. I mean, certainly there are, you know, there are wishes and desires to have a policy that, for example, includes residency. And that just has not come before us at this point. So this applicant is, the timing is such that this applicant is coming before us now.
It may be before us if we research the 1986 license.
Well, I would just, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Duffy, would you just speak about the timing of this application? And the deadline by which the board, the board must make a decision and the reasons for that?
The board has 60 days from the date of filing the application to grant or deny a license under this statute. I believe, can't remember now, I think it was filed on-
June 6th.
June 6th. So that brings you to August 6th, give or take a day or two, to grant or deny the license.
Thank you.
And just, I'm sorry, the piece about the 1986, I mean, I know we're hearing that now and, but that's not what our law says. I mean, our law indicates that a transfer can occur to any individual or company that would otherwise be qualified. And we do not have a policy right now that requires residency. So that, that's my concern, is where we're muddying the waters a bit by talking about what we should have, which we, you know, we really do need to have. That's why we have a working group. We probably need a whole list of things that we need to really focus on as we give out these grants, you know, water quality and all of that.
Who would be originally qualified, not presently?
I don't-
Right.
Well, it was, you're talking about the residency requirement?
Yes.
I don't know whether there was a residency requirement in 1986 or not. I know Ms. Kelly testified there was and there was a trial in Superior Court. She, her memory is correct, but as I recall, I attended that trial. It was about whether or not there was a pre-existing non-conforming use for zoning. That was primarily the question.
Didn't have to do with the residency.
Yeah.
But could you just speak to the issue about, because that's one of the primary concerns that folks have raised here? Could you, I know you've spoken about it. If you could just indulge me one more time. Do we have a residency requirement for this right now?
No.
Okay.
Sam?
I'm curious to know what the court appointed trustee, what role he would play should we deny this grant transfer. I mean, if another, he would have to find somebody else that was qualified. Is that right?
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Through you?
Yes.
I would expect that I would be sued and I would defend myself. I'd have to seek Superior Court authority to hire an attorney. And I would have to defend a court action for a breach of contract. I would imagine that the town would be interpleaded or included as well. Ms. Frank?
And could you explain to me what would the breach be?
I'm under a contractual as well as a court ordered. I have a court order that allows me to transfer this license or the grant, if you will, to this company as a result. I presented the contract to the court. The court authorized me to transfer, subject of course-
The board's approval.
Absolutely. You own the, or you control the earth under the water surface. And that's what we're talking about. We're just talking about that and nothing else.
Any other questions from the board? Is anyone ready to make a motion?
I move that we approve the transfer of license to Cape Cod Oyster Company with the conditions that they must maintain navigable waters and use of the public boat ramps, unobstructed use of the public boat ramps.
Can I, may I add to that? If I could just say, and that they'll address the shore side concerns that were raised as well. I mean, I guess that's part of the no use of the boat ramps, but-
Well, I didn't say no use, but at least unobstructed.
Appropriate use.
Yeah.
I don't think it's right.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, with respect to findings, do we have a finding that this applicant is qualified?
I believe that we did get testimony to that effect from people of authority who are objective. So I would say, yes, that is a finding. They certainly have an ongoing business doing the same kind of aquacultural activity.
Any discussion on the motion?
But, sir, I just, I don't feel comfortable with this whole situation, but I guess we don't have any time to decide.
Yeah, we do. I believe we have the option to vote no. We don't have another option to delay it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
No.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Does it need a super majority for a transfer?
I don't know.
What's the effect of the three to two?
It's a majority vote.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair? Can you take your word?
Thank you. Back to special event.
Ron Newcomb Basketball Tournament.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
One last. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the First Annual Ron Newcomb Basketball Tournament, Sandwich Road Field Court, Saturday and Sunday, August 5th and 6th, 2017. Is there anyone here for the applicant? Thank you. Step forward, sir, and if you would introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Newcomb. I apologize-
Can we have quiet in the audience so we can hear the applicant?
I had a possible chat on the get here.
Thank you.
I've started a foundation, my father's name, passed away eight months ago from our cancer.
Sorry.
His two loves are sports and recovery. I'm in recovery. I have a little over five years clean.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Very close with the rec center. They let a lot of us in recovery go there. They let the guys from the Stephen Miller House go there in the winter time and use the facilities a couple of times a week. So I've kind of come up with this thing in honor of my father and to help people, you know what I mean? Trying to save their lives. So I've set up, basketball's my first one. I've worked with Joe Holnick at the rec center about it. And I'd like to put on different sporting events throughout the year to, one, raise money. This first one, I'm going to donate to the rec center and they're trying to get a new floor in there. And I would like to make a donation to them for that. And then also keep the fun going with the monies after that to help get people coming out of like the Stephen Miller or the Emerson House or different programs who can't afford to move into recovery homes. I've also hooked up with MASH, which is the Massachusetts Alliance of Sober Housing, to work with them to help me place guys in the proper homes. Because I also know there's a lot of kind of shadiness going on in this town and in MASH, maybe with some of the houses that aren't approved by the state or just kind of money pits. And I don't want to be a part of that, you know? So I'm working with those guys through MASH to choose the right houses. And I guess I'm asking for approval for this tournament to go on this weekend coming up. And then also other tournaments in the future to go on, to raise money and then to different, donate to different areas where I feel like the town needs. And then from there, build this fund to help people move into recovery homes until they can get on their feet, like kind of like a scholarship, like a first month for somebody. I mean, it's $100 to $50 to $180 a week to live in these places. And men and women can't afford that if you're coming, you know? We usually, I know for myself, we start off, we end up with nothing when we go into treatment. And it's hard if you don't have somebody, family members to back you, to get into these places until you can get a job and find a job and stuff like that.
Honorable goals. And I understand this event was approved, special event, it's recommended, comes to us. That was a really good presentation for this. We look forward to seeing you at future events. Is anyone from the board have any questions?
I guess I, I think-
Sure.
Very supportive of the whole idea. I just want to make sure you're getting some advice as to actually how to set up the committee behind taking in funds and then being able to make those proper donations that, someone's helping with this because you could get yourself to some tricky situations. For instance, one of the, in your flyer, you talk about all the proceeds regarding the rec center. But in your documentation, you say, well, some of the proceeds might be going to cancer research. And you just want to make sure that whatever you're doing, you're sticking with what you say so that someone doesn't come back and say, wait a minute, I thought this was going to go to that new floor and it turned out going someplace else. And just to get some support and so you can be very careful.
I wonder if we could make this subject to the approval, working with Together We Can? Have you spoken with Together We Can? That's the Falmouth organization that does administrative help in terms of taking in the money, putting it in the account, and then getting it where it's supposed to go.
I have not. I'm brand new to this. This was an idea two weeks after my dad died, that I thought, and it kind of just happened, you know what I mean? So I'm brand new to this. I spoke to, I don't know if you know the Gavin Foundation, it's through Boston, it's a big nonprofit. And they have kind of put me to different avenues to talk to people. I wanted to make it a nonprofit, but I spoke to a lawyer at a bank and they told me that I'm, I gotta hook up with all these different companies, that I have to pay to get me hooked up on nonprofits. So I'm brand new and I'm willing to take any advice and sit down with anybody because-
Maybe, Mr. Suss, could you put him in contact with Sandy Cuny from Together We Can?
Certainly.
And maybe attach it to the application as it's approved? And so would it make sense to make the motion subject to that?
The other question I had is, you talk about the rec center parking for overflow, but the event is at the Sandwich Road.
We, I spoke with the Stephen Miller House. They have three vans that they transfer guys with. And I've got approved through the Stephen Miller House with their lawyers and stuff like that, that the guys are going to be there all day. They're allowing them to play in it. So they're, if we fill the park, then they're allowing us to use the vans to kind of shuttle people back and forth.
So it'd be the vans, really, that would be the parking of the, yeah.
Right.
And is the intent to raise money by, through donations?
Yes.
Or is there a fee to get to be a part of the tournament or?
I reached out to many, most of the guys in recovery who are business owners who have sponsored teams. They're giving me money because I've ordered shirts, stuff like that, and have, are willing to sponsor teams for guys to play.
And so if you could get some more donations from businesses out there to support you, that would be great.
I would love to. I mean, Hogs and Dogs is coming down to do the food. We've come up with a plan to do food tickets for $10. And he'll give you a certain amount of food for that $10. He's donating free, he'll keep seven. He's donating three of every $10 back. I was thinking about doing a fifty-fifty raffle down there.
So would you be, would you object to this being granted, subject to you, working with a financial organization that will hold the funds under the proper rules?
I'm not against that at all.
And then will suggest, I don't know if Together We Can can do it that quickly, but you could, we'll give you that contact, and the second option would be to go to a bank and open an account perhaps. Does that make sense to the board?
I think so.
Is there a motion in that regard?
Just have one more question. So if people want to get involved and sponsor a team, how do they contact you?
I put flyers out everywhere. My number's on the flyer, it's all over social media, the stuff like that.
So what do they look up on social media?
Ron Newcombe Hoop Tournament?
You could probably pull that up. It's all, I don't do social media myself, I stay away from it. But my mother, I was going to say, she still has an account in the Ronald Newcombe name, so that's where any money that I've already gotten has gone into that. Like the check that will go to for this tournament, for the rec center, will be, will be from Marguerite and Ronald Newcombe, you know what I mean? Because they still have that account. And that's what we were going to do as of now. Mom always has my back, so she's the one who's kind of doing all the financials, all the money that I've spent receipts, I've given to her. But I mean, any, you can go on any Newcombe besides myself, Mitchell, Dawn, David, Marguerite, on social, any social media, it'll be all over it.
Okay.
In the recovery community, all my friends have posted it and stuff like that, so it's just, it's out there. As much as I can get it out there. Like I said, I'm new to this, so I'm kind of...
Yep. And Tom, just so you know, Together We Can, it is a 501(c)(3) organization here in Falmouth that actually does exactly what you're hoping to do. Partner with a group that wants to do fundraising, do something of community service in the community, so that they don't have to go through all the legal hoops to set up a 501(c)(3). They've got the experience, they've been around for fifteen, twenty years. So they would be a great group to work with, to keep you, you know, on the straight and narrow.
Yeah. That'd be great, because I know there's a lot to it. I kind of talked to that lawyer at Rockland, Cape Cod Cooperative, and they said, there's tons of hoops for you to get that number, it's going to be very tough.
Megan? Just briefly, just, this is really wonderful, and I think it's something that our community needs more of, and I would just, just a little plug for Falmouth Substance Abuse Commission. They're looking for members. I know you're probably super busy, you're doing a million things, but there's never anything more valuable than someone who's in recovery, being able to be part of an organization that's talking about, how do we create more recovery for our community? So I would really implore you and ask you to, you know, maybe be a part of that or look into it. And even if it's just, you know, that you connect with them, so that the events that you have like this in the future, they can advertise and work with you on, so...
Because that's like another avenue I'd like to go to, because I know, I've been on the Cape for ten years, I moved down here. There's a lot of recovery, but there's also a lot of what happens. People come to God's and all facilities, come down and move into these homes, they're used, and then they stay here. And I understand it's tough for people in the community to have to deal with that. And I kind of, my goal is to be that advocate for recovery. Like, we're in the community, there's a lot of us doing good, you know what I mean? It's not just, oh my god, another overdose in the paper. That's not, you know, people do.
We do, we need, we need good news.
But I also want to say, hey, this is what we're all, some people are like, changing their lives.
Yes.
And becoming productive members of the community. And I really want to be an advocate for that, also to help people who are coming out of treatment, give them a chance.
Thanks for that.
You're doing the hardest work that there is for people to do.
It is.
I'm doing in honor of my dad, I know he wants me to do it. Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Megan? I would move approval subject to there being some connection with Together We Can or some like organization to help with the finances.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And somebody would be willing to kind of...
A town manager will reach out to you. Do you have his...
I have a question. Mr. Newcombe has an email address we could utilize in order for me to expedite connection.
Great idea.
I want to give it to the town manager, you don't have to broadcast.
You won't, you'd like my email?
If I may. Wonderful. Thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The paperwork will be available tomorrow.
All right, great. Thank you.
Next, we have a committee report. We're trying to take as many committee reports as possible. Diane from Mr. Suso's office is contacting committee chairs directly, and we now have the Commission on Disabilities. Kathleen? And I understand, I think you passed out some things in advance?
Yep. I'm in her place.
Is it possible to review? Is that you?
No, it's not me. Yeah. Hi, Madam Chair, Mr. Suso, board. This is the first time I've come before the board to let you know what our business has been, what our initiatives are, what our hopes are, what the commission is trying to accomplish in town.
And can you just state your name for the...
I'm Kathleen Haynes, and I'm from Falmouth, and I'm chairperson of the Commission on Disabilities.
Thank you.
You have a more or less agenda before you, and I gave you copies of the documents that we have produced to show what we're trying to accomplish and what we have accomplished. One of the things we've really been working on is an emergency, emergency management, nine-one-one way to contact the disabled in the case of mitigation or needing to shelter. And in conversations with the police department, there hadn't been a source of knowing where the disabled live in Falmouth on a general basis. What we did find out through our ADA coordinator, Ms. Coleman, was that there is a nine-one-one indicator form. It's a disability indicator form, it's in your packet, and we're going to be passing them out wherever we can and getting them filled out. They're submitted to the municipal coordinator, nine-one-one. So anybody who fills us out, if in case of an emergency, this operator will have the target areas where to evaluate the situation, how to get a disabled person to safety. There are procedures set up through emergency management with the fire department for getting people onto buses or those sort of things to shelter. There could be separate rooms for different type disabilities, impairments, those type services. So we had actually successfully completed that initiative, thanks to finding out the disability indicator form. The next is inclusive playground. There's a difference between accessible and inclusive, and that's a really important point, because accessible means you can get there. Inclusive means everybody can be there. And we'd like to propose an inclusive playground for Falmouth. And that would be a very large undertaking. It would mean a lot of stakeholders would be involved. We'd like to bring forth the idea and have the town jump in and help us come to a plan on how this can be done for the town of Falmouth. We would like to propose that T-Ticket Park be a site considered. One of the reasons being is because with inclusive playgrounds, one of the benefits of having a nature area is children who can go in wheelchairs, can go down paths, they can go to boardwalks, they can go to vermin pools with support systems. Look for tadpoles or butterflies, as well as enjoy playground and play. It's such a commodity to have play today. And to have a playground in a place that is sort of looked at suspiciously by a large part of the community would be a boon to Falmouth, and it would bring people to the conservation area and have people experience the conservation area in the way that it should be. But you have to have something there to bring people to, and why not children playing? All children. And we have the Challenger Club in Osterville that has a lot of Falmouth children. They're exposed to activities through baseball and soccer. They're of all ages, all types of disabilities. We're sending them to Osterville to play. They will still need those programs, but why not have something in Falmouth for all children? And there are small bits and pieces of accessible equipment here and there, but it's not inclusive, not all children, and not all ages. And if it's multi-generational, you have T-Ticket Park right by T-Ticket Park, you have a lot of things in that area that would be a boon to Falmouth, that would help tourists who come visit. I mean, it's just, it's incredible. And I've given you some in your packets, information on the inclusive playground.
Thank you.
One of the centers too is Enid Cobb in Hyannis, and there's also efforts that are being put forth in Born for an inclusive playground, and that may even be open now. The third item is the disability survey. We have been trying to come up with a way to figure out how many disabled people are in Falmouth and what their needs are, and is Falmouth working for them? So we have a very raw prototype, and it's in your packets, and it was done with Survey Monkey, so you can only do so many questions. So it was just a prototype to see what we could accomplish with it. And we have ideas, they came up with an idea of having the service center who work with disabled clients fill it out. Another idea was Beata, the N.A., the healthcare agencies, they knew who their disabled clients are. We don't need to know names. It'd be nice if somebody wants to give their name, but in my doctoral program, a lot of studies that we perform are done with numbers. So you can assign numbers to the studies and the specific people. We don't need to break HIPAA laws in order to find out what people need.
So it could be a blind survey?
Yes. It very easily applied. It would have to be all compiled, and we may need to have somebody help us do that. Obviously, it's a big task. A lot that we're trying to do, a big task. But if we don't start, we don't begin, we don't get there. So that is that item. This was done in May, this agenda, so we may get a little sidetracked, but let me find my own notes.
Next, you have health fair?
Okay. The next thing was the health fair. We want to have a health fair possibly next spring that would bring the disabled community and able community together to experience services for the disabled. Things are in their channel, but it's also talked about having wheelchair accessible virtual games, if we can find a vendor who, you can do the virtual glasses, maneuver obstacle courses as if you're using a power wheelchair or a wheelchair. Because people don't understand what it's like to sit in a wheelchair all day. Well, I don't sit in it all day, but I spend more of my time in it than I do out of it, out of necessity. And people don't see me as having any braces, they don't know what it's like, they don't know what my disability is. So to have the public come to a fair that is highlighting disability is a boon again to the town, and it will bring different factions of Falmouth together to experience what a disability is and how to handle a disability. Sue?
And Kathleen, also, I know something we had talked about in the meetings was, you know, talking about and getting information out there about the resources available for folks. So at a fair like that, having information accessible to individuals so that they understand what's available in our community or nearby for whatever their needs may be.
Right.
So not just raising awareness about what, you know, about our community, but also raising awareness about what services are available.
Right. Because that was one of the ideas, was to have like social security and different agencies available to help people learn how to sign up for some of these things. And you got my RAC card, that's another thing. We just had RAC cards made.
Okay.
They're on the back, have a list of all the different types of resources for the disabled in Falmouth. They have our mission statement, and we'll be passing those around town. The police station has some, the chamber has some, all the commission members will have them. So we're trying to get out the word there are services and resources available in this town for the disabled community.
Huge accomplishment. This is great.
So my other, just quick notes are, there is a problem with accessibility. And I went on a tour with Jim Brady from the DPW the other day, and we have a whole list, and it's in your packet, of just what we found in an hour on curb cuts, roads. I don't think anybody realizes it, he didn't, that the East Main Street work that was done actually left the road about an inch lower than it should be. When you, I tried to go from by Falmouth in the for birds store there, on the crosswalk to the opposite side of the street, I couldn't get up the curb. It's an inch lower than it was. And I've heard from all kinds of people that the driveways going into the Dantlos, to the rec center, all those, they're all, the driveways are higher than the roadway. And I understand that there's going to be roadwork done somewhere down the line, it's going to be ripped up again. But in the meantime, you have somebody like me, who unknown, is in the middle of the road, who can't get up a sidewalk because somebody didn't measure something right. And we have a lot of curb cuts like that, we have a lot of sidewalk problems. I would like to suggest, it becomes available tomorrow, the ADA municipal grant program, that the town apply for it. It's for accessibility issues, for curbs and things that the town needs money to pay for. The town faces these humongous things constantly, we had to come up with funds. And this is up to twenty-five thousand, twenty-five hundred thousand dollars in grant money.
Is that in your packet, Kathleen?
It's in your packet, and it will be on the MOD website tomorrow. It comes out tomorrow.
Great.
There's also, the problem is businesses not having doors that we can get into. And automatic doors are not a luxury, they're a necessity. I have one arm that I can use, that has to go on here, I can't push a door open. I can't maneuver this arm anymore. So I'm only one person. There are a lot of people in my situation. There are elderly, there are people with children who can't get through doors. I came up with a figure that I had two years ago from St. Patrick's Church. It cost them under four thousand dollars for the devices for two doors, and under eight hundred dollars for the electrician to put in two automatic doors. What's wrong with corporations in town like Dunkin' Donuts, which is totally inaccessible to me? Things like that. They're crazy. But they can also apply for tax incentives that are available. ADA, tax incentive for proving accessibility. There's no reason in today not to be able to access a building for any reason.
Would you be willing to work with Mr. Brady in terms of posting some of that information on the town website?
Sure.
I think that would be one first step, so the folks know that that's available. And then if Mr. Suso, I think, has a packet, he can, of course, look into the availability on grants, so that we can put those two things together. Very, very...
I actually got the grant email Sunday night, and this afternoon, I got it from the Sleckman's office in my box here. So we're on the same page, we just have to get it into the same thing.
Terrific questions, anyone? Sam?
Curiosity, we have committees, commissions, and boards. Kind of know how the Conservation Commission operates, and they have certain enforcement powers, because there are regulations and what have you. Does the Commission on Disabilities have some kind of enforcement role?
No. Well, we do, in a way. Because one of my options is, I have a whole envelope full of complaints on curb cuts, on sidewalks, on packing lots. All businesses in the state of Massachusetts have to have a free-standing, permanent, fixed handicap parking sign. This decal in the road doesn't count. You have to have the sign. I've talked to shop owners. Yes, 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 we're going to get them. They're not there. Those are going to the Architectural Access Board. Buildings, Dunkin' Donuts, I've been to two of their buildings in the past month that I've gotten through the door. Either the counter is way too high for me to get my order, the door to the bathroom I can't get out of, or I can't get out of the building, because the door has a bar on it that I can't push because I got this arm. Those are going before the Architectural Access Board. So that is our remedy.
That is the enforcement. Megan?
And just one other thing that I know that the commission is doing, and I know it's kind of still being worked through, but that I think is really important, and I commend Kathleen and the other members, is to have their members have liaisons to some of the other departments and boards in town, so that some of these things aren't just responding, but it's more proactive.
Right.
So that there's education around some of these needs, and there's a voice from the commission, you know, a regular, ongoing dialogue. And that really hasn't happened, because the commission really wasn't, it really wasn't operating for a while. So I think that's a, that's a big...
Well, it's back in flux, which is another point I must bring up. The membership of the commission is less than what it is. Come to find out, as Mr. Susan you know, we're only allowed seven members. We have nine. Majority must be disabled. We're losing three members. We have to add two disabled members to the board. Because of this situation, we have to write a warrant to go to town needing. I don't know how to write a warrant, so I'm going to need all the help I can get, because I was sold it has to be in by the end of August. end of August. So we need help.
We'll, you and I will talk further about that.
We need that.
We're ready for it.
In the writing, I was told by the MOD should say from five to thirteen members because that gives us the flux, because the state statute now is for up to thirteen members. No less than five, no more than thirteen.
No, we're going to address that because obviously those members, the other members were really valuable and.
Yeah, and, and I'd like to keep them on in advisory position right now until we have the disabled members on board, instead of just pulling in resignations until we know exactly what's the situation is.
And Mr. Suso's going to work with that in the interim.
You all have been great on that. I appreciate your help.
And Madam Chair, can I just confirm, uh, Town Council Duffy has that on his working list for November town meeting.
So there you go.
Makes my heart feel good. Thank you.
Before we move on, any other questions?
We're mostly in advising, and it, I can't even think, I'm tired, to help get things moving in town sort of proactively. I don't believe in being a rabble rouser. I have to be now, being chairperson, but I am more into.
You're coming from the positive.
Yes, doing it quietly, but forcefully if I have to, which is why I hold the A A B card.
And you're the, you're the one for the job. Thanks, Kathleen.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
And thanks for what you're doing for all of those disabled people. I mean, you're a voice for them, so you're not just a complainer.
Well, I don't believe it's complaining. I think it's more trying to get, to do the right thing, to be inclusive for all in all areas.
Very important.
Maybe we can get some of that grant money to fix some of these curb cuts.
Really, I think it's really necessary that the town apply. I brought it up before and it didn't go anywhere because this is the second round that I've known of.
And Mr. Suso's on it this time. We do have an extremely full agenda, so I'm going to move ahead quickly to Mr. Jack.
Thank you, Kathleen, very much.
Thank you, Kathleen, great job, Mr. Jack, for the.
You're welcome.
Uh, water and wastewater monthly report. Mr. Jack, thank you.
Are you all set? The remote is up on the podium?
Yeah.
I hope, last time, right on top? No?
No.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good evening. I see you have a very full agenda, so the good news is I have a very short report.
Great.
There are no charts, no graphs, no pictures, and no drone videos, just statistical information since the projects are just about done. So I'm going to start out with the Long Pond facility and end up with Little Pond. Actually going to give you a report this evening on five projects because we've been carrying five, but we're reporting a larger of the two. So for Long Pond, original contract was forty point nine million. Currently it's at forty-one point three. We're at ninety-eight and a half percent completed. Right now it's about, actually just running through its shakedown phase. Final commission, final completion, which includes the commissioning of the existing Long Pond facility, will be in the fall of this year because that will not occur until after we've taken that plan offline, brought the new plan online, what have you. As far as operations of the new plant, we have been working closely with the E P. The permit is pending, so I would expect that permit within the next, let's say, week to ten days.
Great.
Potential change orders and the actual and potential percentage of those change orders is a one point three percent. Potential change order value is ninety-five thousand. So one point three percent is very low, and the project is well under budget. Wastewater plant upgrade was three point seven million, was the original contract value, was adjusted to three point nine with two hundred twenty thousand, two hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars in change orders. It's ninety-nine point eight percent complete as of June, which means it's actually complete now. And from a change order perspective, the contingency value there represents six percent. The contingency on this project and the subsequent projects that we're going to be talking about is generally ten percent. So once again, the project is under budget. The existing lift stations, we had two of our larger lift stations, which was Shiverx Pond and Jones Road, and then we had one of our smaller lift stations at Falmouth Heights for the harbor area that had to be upgraded in order to accommodate the sewer system expansion. So the project was one point five six million, adjusted value was one point seven. It's virtually completed this point. The change order value was a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and the contingency was nine point three percent. So that one is also on time and under budget. Recharge beds fourteen and fifteen used to be known as Site Seven. These were additional recharge beds that were constructed in order to handle the flow for the Little Pond Sewer Service Area. Original value was one point five million, adjusted value was one point six. As of July, those are complete, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars on change orders, and that represents seven point two percent of the contract value. So once again, this project is under budget and complete. And then I save the best for last. And on the Little Pond Sewer Service Area contract, original contract value was twenty point four million dollars. In May of seventeen, which would have been the last report that I gave you, the adjusted value was twenty-one point six million dollars. There were about one point two million dollars in change orders. The adjusted contract value now, after the final change order, is twenty point one seven million dollars.
Wow.
So that means about just under two hundred fifty thousand dollars less than the original contract value.
Congratulations.
So that project too is complete, but it came in well on the budget and certainly on time. So it was a good project for us as a community.
Spectacular. Really good news. How many communities can say that on such large projects? Really great. Any, Doug?
So there's still some work that we need to do on Little Pond Sewer Service with some funds to do a little normalizing between gravity and the grinder pump ones.
Correct.
Okay. Second question I had is, and it's not on this at all, can you just talk about how our grader is now back in service?
Our?
Grader?
Okay.
Is it now working? I guess, I've heard now that we were able to regrade at Depot Ave, and there's a chance at the beach parking area.
Yes.
It's just been, it was out of service for a while, and now some things are getting done because it's working again?
Yes. For the record, though, we don't just always use the grader. There are a number of roads where the grader isn't actually suitable, and we use a loader. So, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing I might add very quickly too is on the betterments for the Little Pond Sewer Service Area construction. We'll be preparing those within the next probably forty-five days. So the betterments will reflect these contract values, so the value should come in less than what was expected, so.
Thank you. Doug?
Just one question about the upgrade to the treatment plant, the wastewater plant. Is that performing as expected so far?
Yes.
Great.
Yes. There's, I think, the only issue we have right now is adjusting one of the totalizers, but flow totalizers.
And so I know we haven't hooked up most of the people in Maravista area, but with all the new businesses, do you have any idea how much of the flow increase we've had? We were only at, I think we were fifty-five percent prior to the project?
Well, that's kind of, that's kind of a moving number as far as what our actual permitted volumes are versus what our plant capacity is. The plant was designed and built to actually be handled one point two million gallons per day, expandable to one point four. So the plant capacity is not the issue, it's the discharge capacity of the plant, so.
Any other questions?
Mr. Jack, could you segue right into the next agenda item? Great presentation, congratulations.
Thank you.
We're not going to take questions on a presentation today. We've got a very, very full agenda, trying not to be here at midnight. We're moving on to the Republic Services trash recycling update. So I wonder if you could just kind of give us overview. We know we recently had a lot of issues right during the holiday, right when folks, relatives and everybody was, was visiting with just getting the trash picked up, the recycling picked up. So I wonder if you could just kind of tee up problems that you received, the response to the problems, and what the requirements are in the contract. And then I see probably some folks from Republic, which we'll welcome, and we very appreciative and grateful that you're taking your time to come and speak to this community. So Mr. Jack first.
Thank you. By way, by way of introduction to the issue, Fourth of July week is obviously one of our larger weeks as a community as far as visitors go and population goes and trash, if you will. It's one of our largest volume weeks. So it's a week where we try not to have any problems. This year was different in that we had an event that occurred on that Friday following July fourth, and we had a significant rain event. So that was the precipitating event that would cause a delay in the collection routes on both trash and recycling for Republic, who is our curbside trash and recycling collection provider. And that started it, and then it continued for nearly a week until they were able to catch up. So the end result was a lot of inconvenience for area residents in that the trash collections were at a minimum, generally delayed a day for that subsequent week. It's always expected that during that week it's going to have to get pushed off until the following day. One of the things that I would acknowledge too is that since we presently use the Bourne landfill, one of the constricting factors now is the closure time for that landfill. So therefore, when Republic runs behind for whatever reason on any kind of event, then when their trucks are full, there is no disposal location in order to unload the trucks and continue on with the routes. When we had the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station, we had the ability to be flexible with the operation on that to allow them to be able to unload their vehicles during events like this. So at this point, the board had asked if Republic could come in in order to provide them with an update on what happened, and more specifically, I think, what actions would be taken in the future to prevent any such recurrence. And I think we all certainly understand that things can happen, but this one took a bit longer to resolve than it should have, so.
And if I might, and my memory could be a little off, I literally was at flood zero. I mean, I was right there with the police car that was, you know, up to the windows in the flood situation. But I thought there were pickup delays before that. Were there any other factors besides the weather?
Not to my knowledge, because they were delayed by.
Just for the holiday.
Yeah, they were delayed by a day due to the holiday. So it pushed each collection day behind by one day. And since the holiday happened on a Tuesday, that is somewhat unusual. So I know there were people that may have been confused by that, as opposed to having your typical Monday or Friday holiday would affect the routes. So when that happens in the middle of the week, each route day is then pushed to the next day, and then they use that Saturday in order to collect the Friday route. So on Friday, they weren't collecting the Friday route, they were collecting the Thursday route on Friday. So then.
They really weren't collecting anything for most of the day because of the rain.
Correct.
And it really interrupted.
Correct.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
So what we have here this evening is.
One at a time, and we have to take it from the microphone so the folks at home can hear us. So when, if you have a. Thank you. Mr. Jack?
So from Republic Services this evening, Mr. Chery Grady, who is the Regional Marketing Manager for New England, is here this evening, as well as Mr. Dave Connor. And he is the Regional Manager for the, basically the eastern Massachusetts area, which would include our area. And he is the one who has the responsibility specifically for the Falmouth area.
Great. Thank you. Welcome, gentlemen. I, just on behalf of the board, want to say we, again, we appreciate you coming. A lot of communities on the Cape do not have curbside pickup. We appreciate the fact that your company was interested in, you know, taking the contract, bidding the job, all, all that was involved with that. And the intent of asking, inviting you before the board is to just really allow expectations going forward. And if you could just address that most importantly, thank you.
Fair enough. Madam Chairwoman, board, town officials, residents, town officials, just want to say thank you for having us here tonight, first of all, and giving us the opportunity to be able to explain what took place and what we're doing to make sure it doesn't happen again. The rain event on Friday was definitely what precipitated us to get behind. I can tell you that we've been doing this for a long time and servicing the town very well for a long time. Obviously, the first two weeks of July are always going to be the heaviest. That's when people are coming into town and the, and the population grows. That's nothing new. That's something we manage every single year. In the off-season, we typically will have four trucks on the road doing trash and two trucks doing recycle. In the summer months, we have five trucks doing trash and three trucks doing recycle. So we go from six to eight. What we learned here on this Friday with the rain event, if we had had ten trucks every single day, we probably would have been okay and been able to manage through the rain. We're guided by federal regulations for our drivers. They can't drive more than twelve to fourteen hours a day and can't drive more than sixty hours in a week. So when we have that day come in for the holiday, we start stacking up towards, we get to Saturday, they have to stop working at a certain time on Saturday when they reach that sixty hours. So once we were behind on Friday, which was about half the day, we were then on Saturday getting ready to start finishing up on Friday, there was no way to get caught up. So the good thing about Republic is we have divisions all over the country and a lot of them locally. So we were able to, to call out the troops, so to speak, and get extra trucks to come in the following week to try to get us caught up. We had two trucks each day trying to get caught up with the routes. On the following Saturday, which I want to say was the fifteenth, we brought in five trucks and teams from Tingsboro, Revere, Fall River, Springfield, to come down and try to do that cleanup that one last week. Because we, each day we'd start getting ahead, and then we'd be about a half a day left, and we couldn't get finally caught up. So we were able to do it that final weekend. Now, what that created was a situation where these drivers don't understand that there's a hundred and fifty back downs down Maravista. They don't understand that this mailbox is actually a road, it's, and people aren't bringing the stuff out, you have to go down that road. All of our drivers know that because they are from this area, they've been doing it for a while, or they, they are, have people on their vehicles that are guiding them. So with that, we then had to bring in extra trucks the following week to basically just chase stuff down. And through the entire time, we were in constant communication with Mr. Jack, Mr. McConity, and Mr. Grady, in order to make sure that there was communications on people calling into the town and saying, my street got missed, I still have recycle here. And it was literally entire streets with maybe seven or eight houses on it that we missed. So we chased those with a separate truck so we didn't interrupt the collections that were going on from the fifteenth forward. It did take us seven to eight days to get caught up, and, and with that, I'm profoundly sorry that it took place. But going forward, I think here's what we learned from it. On Fridays, because of the sheer volume in that area of town, we need to have ten trucks on the road. So effective immediately, we have an additional trash truck and an additional recycle truck on the road every Friday. Now, the first thing that popped into my head when we were talking about this, and we've been in to meet with the DPW team on several occasions, is what about Labor Day? Right? So we, we are going to put an extra, two trucks, one recycle, one trash, on for that entire two weeks around the Labor Day to make sure there's no issues. I'd love to be calling Ray and saying, hey, guess what? It's two o'clock and everything's done. As opposed to, it's seven o'clock, can we keep going? And we were literally emailing, texting, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, every day, all night, just saying, hey, we got this one, we got this one, we got this one. So as the reports came in, both from our customer service center and from the town, we were able to address them quickly. So with that, I'd just say, you know, sincere apologies from Republic that it did take place, but the good news is we identified what the issue was, and we've got a plan going forward to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Well, and that was part of why this board wanted to ask you to come down, because while you were doing that, I was on a weekend saying thing, texting, pulled over first, of course. Mr. Suso, okay, here's another area, can you follow up with that? So it was a lot of coordination on the part of the town, you know, and obviously from the DPW and you as well. So it, you know, it does take a lot of people to make this work. One thing I, I know a lot of people want to know, we have on the town website Republic's number, and it's the process, if there is a problem with pickup for the actual customer from your home, call Republic, let them know. What, what happens? Is there an actual person that picks up the phone?
There is.
Is there like a, a log that, that, could you just go through that?
There is. And so we have something that's called a missed pickup, an M P U, okay? So when that's called in, we have three customer service centers across the country, one in Charlotte, one in Indianapolis, and one in Phoenix. I think between the three of them, there's somewhere between nine hundred and eleven hundred people that answer the phones. So when they call in, there's a system they've put information into. If the customer that calls in gives their phone number or address, it will get put in there. But a lot of times it just comes up as Town Falmouth because that's, you're really just one customer. But if the additional information is given there, then we know how to go chase down something if it's missing or there's an issue or a question. That is all electronically tracked, and I can tell you there was hundreds of them during those two weeks.
So your advice, just to make that system work as well as it should. So your advice, just to make that system work as well as it should, is to please leave your name...
An address.
An address. Is a phone number necessary?
Phone number is good if they want to call back.
Okay.
Is it necessary? When there's hundreds of them, honestly, we didn't make all the phone calls to everybody. We just went and found, okay, this street, there's three people that called on the street, get a supervisor over there, inspect it, see if it's good or not. And then the supervisor would, we had a group email chain going, "Nope, that one's already taken care of." Or, "Nope, there are seven things there, and the recycle truck's on its way." So literally, stuff was happening, you know, within minutes.
Great.
But to your point, yes, if someone does have a miss, or there is an issue or a question, call it into the 800 number. We will get what's called an F2 note coming through our system, that then is called out to the supervisor to go and address it. Typically, you're talking about five, six, seven, eight of those a week. There was hundreds a day when this was going on.
Wow. And before we get to more board questions, sir, would you introduce yourself? It's late, I want to make sure you get a chance to speak, at least.
Okay. My name's Terry Grady.
And right into the mic, if you don't mind, because that's our audience at home.
My name's Terry Grady. I'm the Municipal Services Manager for Republic, going back 35 years. So I've been here for quite a while, the old BFI days and ALAG ways days. So my role is, is I work with our general managers such as Dave, to make sure that we're out there and we're getting the job done, and work as a liaison between our management staff and the towns, all the municipal management staffs. We have 42 curbside contracts, you know, in Massachusetts as of right now. So I try to keep an eye on all of those and make sure that we're doing the right thing.
I appreciate that this concern of the towns was elevated, and we thank you for that. Any questions from the board?
Good explanation, I appreciate it.
Very appreciative. Sorry about the late hour, this is exactly what we needed. Just knowing that you're sensitive to all the problems and adjusting is very much appreciated. And we are going to move on, so thank you so much. Just, we have a very tight agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next, we have approval of a request for a sign variance. Falmouth High School and Lawrence School on-premise informational sign to raise awareness for vernal pools located at the schools. Let's see, Chris Brothers, oh, there you are. We try to arrange the chairs so you can get through, but sometimes they get missed a little. So you might know Ms. Brothers from various science fairs. She holds several awards from teaching. We're lucky to have you here, I only know that because my kids have had her, and very appreciative of all of your talent and initiative. So if you want to go to the podium and just give us an outline of why this is important...
Yes, thank you. As you said, my name is Chris Brothers, and I'm the head of the Science Department for Grade 7 through 12, which is the Lawrence School and the High School. And as you may know, this past spring, we built two vernal pools and two pollinator gardens. It was kind of a huge project, one at each of the schools, Lawrence and High School. And as part of that project, we now want to put up an informational kiosk next to the pools that will interpret the ecology of the vernal pools, the pollinator garden, the species, and what people can see there and why those habitats are important. So these kiosks are going to be similar to what you see at the Conservation Commission lands around town, 300 Committee put up most of those signs, but they were actually built by the Lawrence School engineering students and eighth graders. And they're going to build these signs for us as well. Hopefully, we're going to be doing this in the fall. And as part of that project also, we want to recognize the 14 different community organizations that helped fund this whole project, so the sign will also have a small plaque recognizing those organizations. So we have approval from the Sign Review Committee, but they said we need a variance because the sign is on town property, and I guess also because it represents the second sign on the same property.
Great. Any questions?
No, thank you. My son's at Lawrence School, I think it was a grade...
Was he a seventh grader last year?
Yes.
So he probably participated.
He did. We got to hear all about the vernal pool. He makes me drive through there, like to check on it, so it was a great project.
Thank you.
I would move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Terrific, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Next, we have approval for a request, sign variance on-premise freestanding sign, St. Anthony's Church, 167 East Falmouth Highway. Is there anyone here representing? Please. You could just introduce yourself and explain the sign.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Dan Quinian, I'm representing Montevideo Stephen Avalo, who couldn't be here this evening, he had a commitment at Price the King in Mashpee. Our sign was struck back in May by a dump truck not being able to stop. It is the third sign in six years that has been hit and destroyed. So we're looking for a variance for, we're putting up the same sign, we're adding a small sign beneath the main sign that would state our mass times. And we're also looking to move it from the position it is in now to the same distance away from the street, but in a different part of our yard in front of the church.
Out of harm's way.
I'm sorry?
Out of harm's way.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions? Sam?
No, I just want to make sure that when people are pulling up, that their sightlines are not blocked, because I was their campaign this May, and I noticed that if I stood back, there were times when I couldn't see people coming along, and they couldn't see me either. Of course, that was my concern. Does this sign obstruct?
Signs.
Does this sign, is this going to be a safety issue for people trying to pull out of there? Because I know you're, that's really a busy area at times.
It is. And actually, so yes, this is going to be an improvement to that. It's actually going to be closer to the driveway that the police officer stands at. It's a one-way coming into the church. So anyone exiting the second driveway will not have any vision.
Great, thank you.
I move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great job. Next, we have a presentation, status report on the town...
Approve sign variance.
Missed a sign, sorry. Approve sign variance, off-premise promotional sign, East Falmouth Village Association Pride Day on August 12, 2017. Oops, sorry about that. Do you want to tee this up?
Yeah, it's just a little gathering from 10 to 2 at the East Falmouth School. We're going to have a dunk tank and can...
You're going to be in it?
Take a shot at your favorite celebrity.
Perfect.
You have a few people that might do that. And then we have Smitty's Ice Cream, and games for kids, and pony rides, and a lot of fun stuff, so it should be good.
I move approval.
Second.
The only thing was on our application as to how long they're going to be up?
We asked for a week last time, and it'll probably be a little less, but I suppose we should have asked for a week.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed. We'll put one week.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, here we are, moving on. Now we have the status report on the town aquaculture plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few introductory comments, if I may.
Please.
The board, the board will recall that back in April 2016, Town Meeting voted funds for the development of an aquaculture plant in the town of Falmouth. We did have considerable and lively discussion, as I recall. This aquaculture plan was initiated in connection with the town's pursuit of water quality management alternatives. One of the primary objectives is to increase propagation of shellfish in order to remove nitrogen from our estuaries, as the board is well aware, the hope being that we can improve water quality at a cost that is less than the cost of additional sewer construction. At the same time, we recognize that these water bodies are a public resource enjoyed by residents and visitors for a number of purposes, and our goal is to pursue aquaculture in a manner that minimizes impacts to boating, swimming, and wild harvest recreational and commercial shellfishing. To that end, as the board will also recall, at your request, I formed a working group shortly after the action of Town Meeting in 2016, for the purpose of drafting a plan that attempts to balance these same interests, and have begun to solicit public input on this draft proposed plan. More recently, with the arrival of my colleague, Peter Johnson Staub, Peter has ably assisted me in working with this working group. I also want to acknowledge our Deputy MES Director Chuck Martenson for his excellent stewardship with this group, and Greg Fraser's assistance as well, our MES Director. Tonight, we will have a presentation from our consultant for this project. Funds were set aside by Town Meeting, as I have noted. Going through the procurement process, we were able to select Sea Car Plus with Science Wares to fulfill this important consulting role. This is intended as a status report, and we welcome input from the board and the public as we continue to refine and ultimately implement this plan. And as a reminder, the board is not being asked to consider voting on this tonight. This is merely a presentation, and we welcome Sea Car Plus carrying us forward on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. See if we can get the presentation ready. Shall we turn some light on? There you go. Okay. Make sure I go forward and I can go back. The Falmouth rotational aquaculture plan is a volume, it's over 80 pages. And so tonight, we're going to try to give you an overview. Think of it as the lecture, and then the reading assignment to go back. Hopefully, to be able to put the sections in context. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So the presentation overview is a sort of a mimic of the table of contents of the plan. We're going to talk a little bit about the process we used for developing the plan, because a plan is really only as good as the process that goes into it to get all the different perspectives. We're going to look at why we did a literature review, what came out of that, what came out of the resource assessments, what a rotational aquaculture license site is. I thought that bore one or two slides to make sure we all understood the way, the mechanics of that system. And then we're going to talk about nitrogen removal estimates and some next steps, should the board choose to go forward.
And can I just interject along with Mr. Suso's point? I mean, it did print out, but it is draft, it is not a finished plan. So this is still an input kind of part of the process.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the plan was always conceived to be developed over a process. And the first part of the process was to have the working group established to give input to somebody who gets tasked with drafting what the group is coming up with. As we went through this process, we wound up having a mailing list on the agenda and materials that were being reviewed of over 30 people. So there was a working group, and I'm going to list the people who were initially established on that group, just so that everyone has a sense. From town staff, we had Julian Suso, Town Manager, Peter Johnson Staub, Assistant Town Manager, Jennifer McKay, Conservation Agent, Chuck Martenson, Shellfish Constable in that particular road role. And then we had town committees represented. We had Charlie McCaffrey from the Coastal Ponds Committee, John Waterbury from the Water Quality Management Committee, and Jim Cummings from the Waterways Committee, active members of other, a lot of institutional knowledge in those names, just for starters. And then we had Michael Kasparian, Scott Lindell, Daniel Ward, Peter Chase, Jeff Broder, David Brown, Scott Tynell, and Stan Ingram, representing all of these different perspectives. Because when you think about the town's waters, whether you're thinking about aquaculture, whether you're thinking about moorings, or you're thinking about anything, there are lots of different people who use it in different ways, and everyone has their perspective. And so, right out of the gate, we had an understanding that there were going to be different perspectives, and tried to roll those in. So how do we start? Well, we had monthly meetings, eight of them, starting in September, to discuss all the different aspects of the plan as it was being drafted. And we'll talk a little bit more about some of those events in a minute. After we came up with this draft, the group itself, the Shellfish Working Group, was adamant that we needed to get out to the broader public. So even though we would have been ready in April to bring this report to you, we held off until the summer and started in during the summer season after Memorial Day, because we understood that a lot of the people who are interested in these estuaries come in the summer. So we held off and we had a public meeting. And that public meeting was well advertised, we sent it out to over 40 people, and then we went on the websites of each yacht club in the infected water and neighborhood associations. Some were emails, and others really required going into their websites and telling them that we were contacting them. So we did that and had a great meeting. And at that meeting, there was a lot of additional input. There were people who had suddenly become aware that we were doing a plan, and had things to say about it, and had thoughts about it. And instead of just checking off a box and saying we had a public meeting, we scheduled another meeting. So we had a second meeting, and then we had a third meeting, and in between those meetings, we sent a mailing out to every commercial wild harvester, so that they would be aware of that third meeting. And I have to say, this is, it was a very open process, it was a very transparent process, it was very well publicized, and I think that's part of why it was such a success. We got three front-page articles in the enterprise. And we were hoping for something like that. That's exactly what planning at its best does. It gets people hearing about what the town is doing, and gives everybody an opportunity to give their perspective on it. But you have to start with something. So the Shellfish Working Group really kind of put up the lightning ride, as I like to say, maybe an apt analogy, but got people thinking. And you'll see how the plan has changed significantly based on that input that we've been getting. And we're not done, we're here tonight, and there's more to be listened to. The draft you have before you does include all of the input that has been gained through that process, just to be, just so you're aware. The reason, and we'll talk a little bit about the literature review, although it's not the most interesting readable part of the plan. The reason why we did it, it was in the initial scope of work. The first task that we, the Science Wares was asked to do, is do a literature review to comb the universe of Massachusetts and find out who else had done an aquaculture plan and what was in it, so that our table of contents would be comprehensive. And we brought a table of contents to the working group based on the five plans that had also been done for aquaculture in Massachusetts. And because we had such great expertise and engagement in that group, the group said, "Well, have you looked at the state of Connecticut? Have you looked at Long Island? Have you looked at, you know, Maine and Maryland?" And the answer was, "No, but we sure will." So we went back after the Shellfish Working Group's input and said, "Let's see what's in those aquaculture plans." And it turned out that there was still this consistent theme of the elements. And so our table of contents, and our content in Falmouth Aquaculture Plan, is based on common elements of all of those other plans. And so that literature review formed a very rational foundation for why we have in our plan, what's in it. But Falmouth is always a leader, and even though we will stand on the shoulders of giants, we will always come up with something that's new and innovative, because that's what we do in this town. And the nitrogen removal estimates are first. So this is the first aquaculture plan that takes the potential for aquaculture and starts to quantify it in the context of how can we start removing nitrogen and restore our estuaries using this tool? So that's a very exciting part of this. The resource assessments is another sort of example of how the working group rolled up their sleeves. We had a three-hour meeting where we went through a decision support tool to assess which of these, you know, 16, 15 estuaries, it made sense to have aquaculture. We aren't talking about aquaculture in all of them. At first, I was really excited and wanted everybody to rank criteria for each estuary on a scale of one to five, and about two and a half hours into it, we bogged down a little bit and realized that actually, we needed some toggles, we needed some thresholds. And the thresholds, I'm not going to go into it given the hour, but we have some threshold criteria, and based on a yes, no for those five, six criteria, we picked the estuaries that are highlighted in yellow for possibly being appropriate for aquaculture. For reasons that are in the criteria and documented in the report, the other estuaries don't make sense. One other thing to highlight is that the blue, it's a much nicer blue on my screen, but the West Falmouth Harbor, Little Pond, and Green Pond are where our current municipal propagation is handled and done successfully. And we had a very long discussion with about 16 people during one Shellfish Working Group meeting, where we discussed, should we transition that to private aquaculture? And sort of resoundingly agreed that because of the commercial wild harvest and recreational harvest popularity of our existing program, best to leave it alone and promote aquaculture in other areas. So that's where the criteria came from. Next thing we wanted to talk about is what is a rotational aquaculture license, and why have we come up with this? And the short answer is, because it helps to meet multiple needs. There are a lot of different uses, as we've said, in estuaries. And if you take a piece of it permanently and put aquaculture on it, you've effectively removed it the bottom from the public resource. And so the concept of a rotational aquaculture license is to minimize that impact, almost to remove it. In this case, I'm, we're looking at a... In this case, we're looking at a four-year rotation. So in year one, the aquaculture would occur in one location. It would move a second year and a third year and a fourth year, and thereby only have impact on a bottom twenty-five percent of the time. So it's not permanent. There's another good thing. In addition to the fact that it never permanently removes bottom from the public, it also allows for adaptive management. It gives you the opportunity to sight in a given location and to watch it over that year. And if something needs to be adjusted or modified, it's easy to move it because you're moving it anyway, and you can go back and refine your boundaries, unlike laying a foundation, which is very hard to change. So it allows for that flexibility and also allows for a minimization of any kind of public taking. And the other vision with a rotational plan is the thought was to propagate for commercial and recreational harvest in the same area. So where the bottom is suitable, additional propagation of commercially important species like cohogs, or scallops, or soft shell, or other species that come up as commercially important, would happen in the same water column on the bottom. So then you'd move the aquaculture, and now the species would be there harvestable. In some cases, it's not going to be a direct location because the bottom is muck, but where it does, this rotation allows the movement and the harvest, so it meets the aquaculture goals, farming goals, and at the same time, the wild harvesting goals of these two different user groups. And this is kind of a nice illustration where you can see, let's see if I get this right, propagation and aquaculture, and then nothing for four other years. In the second year, you're harvesting where you planted and had aquaculture, and aquaculture has moved to a different site, and so on. I just think this is sort of a nice visual that kind of shows. And this is a four-year rotation. One of the comments we got at a meeting is, "Why can't it be a two-year rotation or a three-year rotation?" And they can be explored. We initially liked a four-year rotation because it's a real minimal impact twenty-five percent of the time. So now we're going to talk very briefly about the locations. And you've seen these in your maps. This is McGansett and its fiddlers. McGansett has one area, this is about four acres, kind of on the border between Bourne and Falmouth, near Swetie Harbor. That's the area in McGansett. Rams is one location, and this is one is already being permitted under the standard permitting process. So we just wanted to highlight it as the one spot in Rams where aquaculture may be permitted. This is Quissette. This is, if anybody knows, the National Academy of Sciences building. This is an incredibly busy boat basin. There's a lot of activity here. And this is the one area, this is two acres. I know it looks bigger than the four acres of McGansett, but that's the map scaling for maximum visibility of each estuary. And the thing to remember both with these is that we're only talking about covering a quarter of it at any given location, at any given time, I'm sorry. So although this is two acres, it would be one quarter of it in any given year that's covered. Now, we're going to talk about what happened during the public hearing processes, the three meetings we had, two at the library, one back here at Town Hall. Initially, and I want to talk about it for Great Pond, for Bourne's Pond, and for Eel Pond, and then I'm going to try to be done. We were very enthusiastic about aquaculture in Great Pond because the nitrogen removal requirement is huge. And we thought if we can get as much of it with shellfish, we might be able to avoid a lot of infrastructure. And so we thought we'd put a little section here, and a section here, and here, and here. And this is the inlet, so this is lower Great Pond. And then here's T-Ticket Path, and we thought another spot here would be nice, and then going up into the Coonamessett River. And during public hearings, talking first with the commercial shellfishermen and women, and then with the neighbors, we removed a lot of areas. We found that this area and some of the areas along shore here and here were considered highly productive by the commercial harvesters. And even though all of the gear would be removed during the winter when this is harvestable, because this is only harvestable, Great Pond, you can only go in in the winter, it's conditional. Nobody harvests there in the summer. That's when the gear would be. There was a sense that we don't know what that gear might do to any wild sets. So we removed those areas and brought them out to less desirable areas. Again, they would still not have any gear during the harvest season, and it would only be a quarter of this area. But again, just because we want to walk before we run, we removed those areas. We completely removed the area in front of T-Ticket Path and up along this side. We completely removed the area along shoreward based on some input from the residents there. And we kept a small piece going up on the west side of, I guess this is, the Coonamessett River is actually up here, but this is sort of the Coonamessett River part of Great Pond. This area will need to be surveyed if this plan goes forward because we don't want to get in the way of navigation or people who kayak or any of those things. But it's there sort of as a placeholder so that we can go field verify if we get to that point. Same thing happened in Bourne's Pond. And a real shout-out to Tim Susa, who knows this area probably better than anybody else, who took us out for hours in a boat trying to evaluate what made sense. Before, we were talking about going on the west side, and a little spot right here and here. And after conversations and a site visit, we went to the east side. And the reason for that is this west side was considered a highly productive area. And this west side is not as productive, especially because we've now, you can't really see it given the scaling, but we went out fifty feet. And so the first fifty feet of the shoreline there is productive, and sometimes has a cohog set or another species set. So we pulled it out. You can still get the gear in there, but there's absolutely no conflict now. We removed the little area here because based on some work we did on the inlet widening project, we realized there might be eelgrass there, so might as well remove it now since we may have a sense that there's no eelgrass. And last but not least, again, we were very ambitious in Wacoit. We had an area, Municus, again, this is the initial map, Municus, both sides of Washburn, as you see coming all the way down, an area right in here, and a small area here. But after public meeting, sorry about the scale, we completely removed all aquaculture from the main basin of Wacoit Bay. It's gone. There's nothing there. We also, thanks again to the field verification from another commercial grower, John Perry, who actually went out and walked this and said, "These are areas where people land their kayaks. These are public access. There's some recreational harvesting, but these round areas could work. We want to field verify it," but that's where we got these areas from. We completely removed the area here because there's occasionally a scallop set, and we didn't want to get in the way of that. And we added a couple of small areas here. There'll have to be a little bit of mooring movement if that one progresses, but this was to create some aquaculture areas. So two more slides. The total acreage is here on the top, and McGansett started at four and ended at four. Quissette started at two acres and ended at two. Great Pond started at about twenty and ended up at ten acres. Bourne's Pond started and ended at sixteen. Eel Pond started at forty-four and got down to twenty-six. Wacoit started at twenty and went to zero. So there was some really great feedback that we got that allowed us to refine to the level. And very important to remember that this is the coverage in any one year. Only an acre will be covered in McGansett in any year. Half an acre in Quissette, two and a half acres in Great, four in Bourne's, six in Eel Pond, and Wacoit. And this is my favorite topic, so we're going to end with that. Nitrogen removal. Why is it important to have a plan that includes both private aquaculture and municipal propagation? The answer is because you double the amount of nitrogen you can remove. The private aquaculture will get you part of the way there. The wild commercial municipal propagation will get you part of the way there. But when you put those two together, you have a real bang for your buck, and you actually get real numbers. And Quissette is a great example. You can get pretty much to the nitrogen removal target you need for that estuary using shellfish if you combine these two, aquaculture and municipal propagation. And that's true in a number of these other estuaries too, and I won't get into it given the hour. So where do we go from here? Well, we continue to review the plan. We assess and address the management questions that have been brought up because there were a lot of questions related to implementation. Even though this was a plan, people got really excited and wanted to know, "Well, if we did it, how would this work and that work?" And section six of that document has all of the issues that need to get addressed. And then if we're going to permit it, we need to seek funding to actually take those, any of these next steps. It's a question of initiative, and do we want to take those next steps funding-wise? With that.
Thank you. So the purpose of this meeting is not only just to kind of get an overview of where the draft plan is, but to also give another opportunity for public input. I want to invite anyone at home or here, if you want to email some information, please do that. You can direct your email, Mr. Susa, what would be the best place to you?
Town manager.
To the town manager. You'll see the email address on the town website. And for comments today, if anyone has an opinion or a question, if you could limit your comments to literally about one minute, we will take some now. Ma'am, come right up to the podium, introduce yourself. Hi.
I'm Martina Khan from East Falmouth. Actually, she has addressed most of the questions. And thankfully, Chuck Martenson had come out after the last meeting on July 10th. I met him, and the map indicated that a lot of the areas which we needed addressing, the upper Great Pond, have been done. But we did have a petition that people signed, and I didn't want to not hand that in. And it just, it seems they are taking everyone's recreational concerns and boat ramps and such into consideration, and this is just a request from several residents, several dozen residents, that that be done.
That's very important. Could you hand that to the town manager? We'll make copies for the committee.
Sure.
Great. Thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ask a question?
Sure.
Yes, yeah, on the, I think going back two slides where you said the acreage in the different places.
Back. Those were...
How many of those are actually currently, current sites? Is this only new sites, or is that also talking about current aquaculture sites?
Oh, these are all new.
Okay.
These are new, and there are fourteen of them. So we're talking about fourteen businesses.
And how many businesses do we currently have? Or how many sites? Four or five?
Four or five? That's a good Chuck question. Current aquaculture permits?
Eight.
Eight or nine.
Thank you.
To add to that, though, these sites are highly advantageous. The reasons are listed in the plan, but having estuary sites are really good business sites.
Sir, if you could come to the podium, introduce yourself.
My name is Steve Patiti. I live on Nev's Way. And when I saw the map, and I actually saw it prior to tonight, I noticed that one of the areas goes right by two boat ramps, one is right on my street. At the end of the boat ramp are a bunch of rowboats to go out to moorings. And this is going, again, right by two boat ramps and a bunch of rowboats that are going to get us out to our moorings. And by the drawing that I'm looking at, what do we do? What's happening? Is this really going to affect our boating?
Okay, thank you. Ms. Carplus, if you could...
Coonamessett River? Great Pond, Coonamessett?
Let's look at it. Upper Great Pond.
Yeah.
So upper Great Pond.
Upper Great Pond, that's it. Right near T-Ticket.
Yep. We're going to go upper... On the revised map. So we did talk to a number of residents. Are you saying that we should need to pull this?
Yes, this is, there's a boat ramp here.
Okay.
There's a boat ramp here.
Okay.
I'm mooring right here.
Okay, so the idea would be, as I think I mentioned, and I'll say it again because I think it bears repeating, this is a placeholder area right now. I did mention, and it is important, that we have to go out and field verify where we would locate sections of that. It wouldn't necessarily all be aquaculture. If you look in the Little Pond area, there's areas, and then there's gaps, and then there's areas. So obviously, when we're out in the field and we notice a boat ramp, we're not going to put bags in front of the boat ramp. But that's a good point. We'll make sure we keep that in mind. Thank you. Anyone else?
And the bags would only be wintertime also?
Carter?
No, they'd only be in the summer.
Okay.
So there is a conflict there. So we do, as I said, that's a tricky area. We really do need to, if we're going to pursue this, go in and, you know, ground-truth it.
Thank you, Carter.
Thank you, ma'am, gentlemen. Carter Hunt, Wacoit. Just wanted to bring up the petition that we brought up earlier. I'm not going to beat a dead horse. You've already talked about residency requirements for both commercial licenses and for the aquaculture plan. That's part of the petition. The other thing that we'd like to, we have added in there, is we'd also like to see that any part of this plan that's implemented, that anybody getting an aquaculture grant have a commercial shellfish license. So that kind of kills two birds with one stone. You've got to have a, if you have a commercial shellfish license, you have to be a resident. So that does work that way. That's what the petition, about ninety-three people signed this petition, that's what we're looking for, is part of the implementation that was spoken about earlier.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Yeah. I just want to, my name is Manny, and I'm from Nev's Way. I just was wondering about these cages, are they going to be placed in between the moorings? Will I be able to move my boat around to access the moorings?
These will not be put around moorings.
Okay. Great.
Great. Is there anyone else? Sir?
Henry Peters, East Falmouth. The nitrogen removal is minimum. It helps with the water quality. First of all, the only reason it was a third meeting is because the shellfishermen weren't notified about the first two meetings. And you just saw all the messages that went through with one grant. If they were qualified, resources as far as financial resources, landing, how are you going to do this, where are you going to work out of? You've got to move seed oyster about twelve times in bags. It's a lot of hand stuff. It's a lot of work. You're talking fourteen acres in Bourne's Pond. Where do you do all this work? Minimal boats under the bridge. What do you do to Monop Beach? Do you do it on the marsh? Conservation is not involved here? As far as working areas? You know, there's a lot of ifs and buts.
Actually, I've...
There's a lot of stuff.
I've seen it. I've been there. We've done it before. Mr. Martenson, do you want to address?
Some of these sites haven't been visited. They don't know how deep the water is. You're talking about clams. Are people even qualified to do this?
I understand your question. It's a good question.
Are people even qualified to do this? You made sure this other guy had to be qualified. Are you going to just give out twenty-five permits to people that have no aquaculture experience?
Thank you. We're going to address that.
You're tying up a lot of acreage here. State of Massachusetts does not permit productive ground to be a shellfish grant. So now you've got to involve the state here. She's not telling you a lot of stuff here. You've got to be straightforward. You've got to be honest.
Lot of people have those concerns. We're going to have Mr. Martenson address them because we're already doing that in other areas.
Sure. First off, to address the first part of your question, you're absolutely right. The state does need to be involved with this process. And both myself, Mrs. Carplus, and Mr. Johnson Staub have actually been to New Bedford and discussed this plan in quite detail with the head of the shellfish, the head shellfish biologist and a number of his subordinates as well. So hopefully, that addresses the first piece. You're absolutely right. It can't be done without that piece. As far as access is concerned, I think when I visited, is this Khan, is that correct? It was a great example of ground-truthing it maybe a little bit ahead of what we normally would do. But when I came over there, it was obvious to us that, you know, we couldn't do farming over there. It wasn't going to work. We need good relationships set up with our neighbors in our neighborhood. You know, we do a lot of farming in an area right now in Little Pond where it's a very tight neighborhood, to some degree even tighter than a lot of these areas that we're looking at. And we've been able to find that there's opportunities for all parties involved, which is really, gets to kind of the beginning of this presentation. We've addressed issues such as aesthetics. We've addressed issues such as access. We've made lanes in certain areas where, you know, if people just want to, you know, even kayak or canoe or access these water bodies, it allows for all that. Just as much as, you know, you want to get to the boat and get to the boat ramp and get to these areas, I don't think there's a single grower in here that wants their bags run over. I mean, they have investment there. There needs to be room between those areas to exist, and that gets done in the ground-truthing stage. So, you know, I want to caution, kind of jumping ahead here, there's a mutual concern here from the shellfish growing perspective and from the homeowners. It's really not that far off, so.
Thank you.
Can I ask, Mr. Martinson, to go through, because we've had, I guess you said eight or nine licenses. What is the process that they have to go through to finally get the license granted? Because I think they come to us three times.
Sure.
Plus four or five other places. It's a very, very lengthy process to ever get to the point where you're running a license.
So one of the impetus is to, to, to working through this was to make that a little bit more attainable for people to be able to, you know, be involved with aquaculture. And, and absolutely right. So the initial process is, you first start with the Conservation Commission with an initial meeting, go to the Board of Selectmen for an initial meeting, and then it's sent over to the Division of Marine Fisheries where they will conduct a survey, and then it comes back to the Conservation Commission, back to the Board of Selectmen, and then goes through a series of Coast Guard permitting, Chapter 91 license, all those things that have to happen after that. So part of the goal here would be to streamline that and allow access to these areas, thereby addressing that all in one shot.
Okay.
And allow some uniformity there.
Okay. The gentleman that just spoke, does that answer all your questions?
No, it doesn't.
You can have a thirty-second follow-up, because I want to be sure it does.
I've got two minutes. The, the cost, we have no idea what the cost of this is. If you're going to do this, do a test study. Involve the shellfish guys. Find out what the cost of this program was. See what, see how the production is. See how much bottom are you going to tie up, and what the production will be, and the cost. No one has any idea what the cost of this is. She won't talk numbers. It's going to cost the town money. It's going to cost guys money. If you don't know what the cost is, how can you proceed with the program?
Ms. Braga?
Just, we're, I just want to be clear. We're not proceeding with the program. It is still in the, the draft stage. We're still getting input. And then the next piece of it will be really focusing on how, if we do this, it's going to be managed, and we'll get further public input, the kind that you're giving right